A lot of things for tonight, so bear with me. Took me a little extra couple seconds to make sure I was organized. So, thanks everybody for coming. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. It is 6:32. Sorry for the delay. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call a roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Mayor Potem Rossini?
Here.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Present. Thank you very much. I would like to give an invocation. I'd like to use this invocation time to encourage us all to be our best to each other. One way we can help each other is to think about the world we live in and what we can do to keep this world as healthy as we can. In 1970, April 22nd became Earth Day. In June 1972, the first United Nations Conference on the Environment was held in Stockholm, Sweden. The UN has held that conference over the decades, and the 50th anniversary was just this past June. In September, on the 17th, we will have World Cleanup Day, which we celebrate most notably as Coastal Cleanup Day here in the area. If you are looking to help out in our community with cleanup, a great resource in the area is our local Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and Girl Scouts, who participate in Cleanup Day every year. If you're looking to participate, reach out to them, and you can sign up and help out as well. As a side note, I also wasn't aware, although I probably should be, that yesterday, August 22nd, is National Honeybee Day. So you can help spread local wildflower seeds, or if you know a beekeeper, give them a hug. I am a beekeeper.
Makes good honey, too.
Thanks. Thank you. So I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance now. That is our time. If everybody would stand, I'd like to ask Todd to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So then, Mayor, I would want to bring something to the council's attention. Just yesterday, the city received information that could pertain to potential future litigation. So I would request that we add that item to the agenda for closed session. We'll do a closed session at the end of the meeting, so that we can get on with what they came for. So I will represent that we got the information yesterday, right? And we need to take action soon, and definitely before the next scheduled regular council meeting. So if I could have a motion to add this item as a closed-session item under Government Code Section 549-56.9D2, anticipated lit significant exposure there, too. We have a motion, a second vote. We need a four-fifth vote. Okay, motion, second.
We have a motion, a second. Steve, would you record votes? Are we ready? Almost there.
Jumped a gun on her.
You can do it verbal. Oh, you got it.
Uh-oh.
Awesome. Okay. Please vote. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it. So we will have a closed session afterwards. Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk. That's at the front desk. Before the scheduled meeting time, speaker cards are available in the back. They're the blue cards. If you want to grab one, bring it up and deliver it to us. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. We will start next with presentations. My great honor tonight, we have two distinguished citizens of Villa Park for this month. We are going to be recognizing Eric Sence and Bill Baker. I think reasons are pretty obvious to most of us here, but I'd like to read a little brief about each. And I'll start with Eric Sence. Eric Sence grew up in Orange, went to St. John's, Orange High, Chapman College, and Cal Lutheran, where he studied for a degree in movement exercise science. Eric has had a fascinating life. Highlights include playing pro football in Europe, where he was a running back for the Temperay Rocks in Finland. I'm going to put a little hashtag Finland Mentions right there, because they love that. Back home here, he met his wife Kristy, married in '94, works at Boeing, and they had three kids, Cody, Bryce, and Nicolette, Nikki. His kids attended local schools, VPHS, Orange Lutheran. He went back to graduate studies, Los Angeles College of Chiropractic, SC, University of Health Science now, and in 2006 moved his chiropractice into our own Villa Park Shopping Center here. You all know, probably pretty well, stayed here until 2019, and is now at the corner of Wanda and Catella, still locally. Eric joined Rotary in 2013, where he loved the camaraderie, because of the great things that Rotarians do and are always uplifting. The motto of "service above self" has always struck a chord with Eric. Eric has always given his time to local coaching, the Dads Club, Indian Princesses, or most recently, on the board of the Eddie Nash Foundation, helping foster youth. He got into the mortgage business, where he met Bob Bell, our January Citizen of the Month, by the way, was introduced to Jim Brodsky, who many of you knew as our Villa Park pharmacist and also a naturopath. Jim and Dennis Koolai had been our Santas for the Santa Tour for many years. And in 2008, Eric was called upon, like Rudolph, to save Christmas as a stand-in. In 2010, Eric took over for good with Bill Baker, and they have been spreading good cheer ever since. So I'll move on to Bill Baker. Bill Baker moved to Villa Park in October 1979. Bill married his wife Paige in 1972. They just celebrated their 50th anniversary. Congratulations. He and Paige have lived in a couple of different houses before taking residence on Hillcrest. Many in our community know of this home as one of the best decorated in Christmas lights every year. I often see Bill out there doing those decorations. They have three kids, Merrill, Will, and Blair, as well as five grandkids. They live locally, the kids, and grandkids, and get to spend family dinner night on Sundays. Their kids also went to local schools, Mater Dei, Servite, Villa Park High School. Bill graduated from USC in 1971, got his Juris Doctor in 1974 from University of the Pacific, McGeorge School of Law. Bill Baker Esquire has been an accomplished practicing lawyer and received the super-lawyer designation since 2005 to present. It would honestly take a long time to go through the list of Bill Baker's accomplishments and things that he's participated in. I'm not kidding. I'm going to go through and highlight a couple that I just, as I was picking out here, this is probably the Director, Chapman College Athletic Foundation, from 1978 to 1981; founding director of Villa Park Community Access Television Corporation, 1983 to 1997; founding director, founding director Mercy House Transitional Living Centers, 1988 to present; founder, initial chairman and board member, Friends of the Villa Park Library, 1995 to present; charter and founding member of Villa Park Rotary Club, 1996 to present. He's been Rotarian of the Board, he's been on the Board multiple times. He's also our charter organization representative for PAC 850, TROPE 850, and CREW 222; founding board member of the Villa Park Elementary School Restoration Corporation, Crystal Cove Alliance, which is now the Crystal Cove Conservancy. In Boy Scouts of America, this list could go on a long time, too. 1964, National Jamboree Participant, 1965 Eagle Scout, gosh, Order of the Arrow, Boy Scouts of America, Western Regional Board of Directors. Bill's involvement in scouts and his commitment to scouting is evident. I see him involved in so many different ways, it's hard to enumerate all of them. It's a lot. My favorite on here, the OCC BSA Man of Character, 2011. He's active in his church, St. Norbert's Parish, has participated in so many different things. But really, what Bill and Eric do for our community as Santa is really hard to quantify. The number of smiles and the energy that they put into it is, it's amazing, and it's really inspiring. It's one of those things that we all wish we had people like that in our community, and here in Villa Park, we do. I did want to end with one final thing, which is that Eric has his mother here, and her birthday, her 95th, if I can give that away, is this week, is tomorrow, so. So, all of that that I've said, and I believe we have a distinguished guest, I mean, I see him right there, Mr. Wagner Supervisor, if you would, I understand there's something you wanted to add.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's a real pleasure to be back in Villa Park and have an opportunity. You went through Bill Baker's many, many involvements and accomplishments. The truth is, Villa Park is lucky to have him. But the entire county is lucky to have Bill Baker. One of the things you didn't mention is he is an appointee of mine on the 3rd District to the Real Estate Appeals Board. And so, not only that, Bill and Paige have been friends with my family for years. Very richly deserved honor and recognition for Bill. And I got to tell you, you know, in my job, we've got a lot of different responsibilities, and I've got a three-year-old granddaughter. None of it matters. None of it matters to her, except I'm giving an award to Santa Claus. That registered. That, oh, wow, Grandpa, that's really cool. So I do have a small token of appreciation on behalf of the County of Orange for Bill and his accomplishments, not just here in Villa Park, which you've done a fantastic job of enumerating just a few of them, but he is truly a distinguished citizen for the entire county. And it is my honor and privilege to also present to Bill Baker a Distinguished Citizen Award on behalf of the county for the service he's proffered to all of us in his role for the county. And I want to thank him for it, and I want to thank you for recognizing what a gem we have for our community here in Mr. Baker. And so I did want to drop by and present this to Bill and say thank you on behalf of the people that I'm privileged to serve. Bill?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Appreciate it. So if we could, Bill, if you and Eric would join us for a couple of pictures, and we can give you the rest of the ceremony.
Where would you like us? You must be a tree wise.
Sorry, he's my dad.
Okay, let me get one more. Everyone's looking. All right.
So if we could get family in, we would like to have as much of family come up here.
Go get in front of him.
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 Community to provide opportunities for all OUSSD students. We are dedicated to bolstering the Orange Unified School District as one of the top school districts in Orange County by augmenting the resources that enrich OUSSD student school experiences and equip them to succeed in education, career, and life. The foundation is working with the district to raise funds to support opportunities that will most effectively improve our schools and the lives of our students district-wide. To clarify, OUPSF doesn't replace local PTAs or school associations, but it's supplemental. Our plans for this school year include raising money to support the district's visual and performing arts, the VAUPA programs, student mental health, and student enrichment programs, as well as fund teacher and school grants. We are organizing a car rental and selling advertising opportunities at Fred Kelly Stadium, as well as holding other fundraising and community events. We know that when our students excel, our entire community wins. So please join us in being champions for students. We hope the Villa Park City Council can assist whenever and however possible. Together, we can positively impact the lives of our students in the Orange Unified School District. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Do we have Villa Park Library? I don't see our librarian. Okay. So then we'll move on to Orange County Sheriff's Department. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me here. Apologize for my appearance, so to speak. I just started a three-day training class, so that's why I'm not in a uniform, so.
So casual.
Yeah, I know. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. So this will be the July 2022 Sheriff's Report, and I'd like to start with some sheriff's message points for the summer, and specifically digital safety, as it applies to children. So it's important for parents to instill safe cyber practices with their children from an early age. If you make it the normal, the routine that you're talking about, this on a regular basis, it goes a little easier and has a little more positive results. Come up with a plan to monitor your child's online activities and set digital boundaries. From elementary school through the teenage years, parents should continue to educate their children on staying safe online. And we see this more and more. The kids are younger and younger with smartphones, so they have earlier access to things online and all the apps. Just some real quick points to set that foundation. Be open, create an environment to talk about the importance of cyber safety. Encourage your children to talk about, talk to you about any of their questions or concerns. Set some boundaries. Come up with rules that work for your family for using digital devices at home, such as time limits or certain apps, what to use and not to use. Educate yourself. Take the time to learn about the various apps, their functions, and their age restrictions. A lot of the applications appear to be marketed towards younger children, could in fact be intended for an older audience. Install security. There are many third-party programs to institute varying levels of security on your devices. These programs can allow you to determine what websites and applications your child can have access to on their devices. And then check and recheck. Check your children's devices for any concerning apps or activities, and if you make it routine device checks part of your family plan for cyber safety, it's generally more productive. Okay, so for the activity for the month, from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, we responded to 259 calls for service. Some noteworthy criminal incidents. On July 21st, we did have one grand theft on Windsor Drive, just miscellaneous items, stolen from an unlocked vehicle. It was about $3,000 in loss, though. We should probably secure our valuables, not in our vehicles, and not leave our vehicles unlocked. We did have four petty theft incidents, stolen bicycle, a stolen e-bike, some other items stolen from an unlocked vehicle, and then a wallet stolen from a purse. A couple of things with those. If you have a bicycle, especially the e-bikes, you're gaining in popularity, want to make sure we secure them, lock them. If you have them in your garage, keep your garage door down. And then a wallet stolen from the purse while shopping. We want to remind people to, you know, be vigilant, be aware of your surroundings when you're out shopping, pay attention for people coming up to you, and maybe doing some type of distraction to take your property. We did have three residential burglary incidents, one on Sycamore with an unknown loss at this time, one on James. This one was a house under construction. It's kind of unique. They actually removed all the brand-new appliances and fixtures that were being put into the residence. It's about a $200,000 loss. So pretty substantial. I would say with that, if you're doing a remodel, make sure you have some type of security measure still in place, whether it's your camera, lighting, some type of, especially if we're not occupying the residence while the time the remodel is going on. We did have a stolen vehicle patrician where the keys were left inside of the vehicle. We want to begin, be cognizant of not making ourselves easy targets. We had two vandalism incidents, tires slashed on a vehicle, and then we had one house egged while someone was on vacation. And then on Crestview, we had a trespassing where a person was found sleeping in the backyard. We have had, seems to be an increase on calls for service regarding a few homeless individuals in the neighborhood. I remind people that even though you see a homeless person, not necessarily committing a crime, but if there is some type of suspicious activity, either you see him or in around someone's property, don't hesitate to call our non-emergency number, and we'll have a deputy come out and attempt to contact them. We did have one domestic, verbal domestic incident on the 9,000 block of Loma Street, and then a narcotics violation initiated activity by the deputy at Catella and Kathleen Lane. And traffic. So for our traffic-related incidents, we did have one drunk driving arrest on Taft Avenue. We responded to four traffic collisions, hit-and-run parked car, regular hit-and-run moving vehicles, and then two minor non-injury traffic accidents. And for July, with our traffic citations, we issued three parking citations. The patrol deputies issued 12 citations, and the motor sergeant issued 20 citations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Questions? That'll do. Thanks so much. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of Chief Hunter. Here's another scheduled arrangement. But as far as calls that we responded, we had approximately 80 incidents that we responded to, but none of those were significant incidents. I would like to also take the time to thank Director Rossini. Apparently, he supported and approved some air conditioning at Station 23, so those members really appreciate it, and so do I when I go visit them. So thank you very much, sir. I would also like to take this time to remind everybody that our safety message, September is National Disaster Preparedness Month. Obviously, in here in California, we sustain a number of different types of disasters, whether it be earthquake, wildland, pandemics. Like to remind everyone that to create a family disaster plan, choose a meeting place outside your home, outside your neighborhood, discuss what to do in the event of an evacuation. Choose an out-of-state emergency contact, because obviously, the phone lines get pretty jammed up. It's very difficult to call out. You can also visit our alertoc.com, which is Orange County's Emergency Notification System, and you can register during an emergency. And most importantly, you can also get involved in CERT, First Stage CPR. I think one thing to keep in mind that when the North Ridge earthquake occurred, resources were pretty much committed within five minutes. So CERT is actually a critical component to self-supporting, sustaining, and being prepared at home. Also, don't forget your emergency kits, water, supplies. You should have at least food and supplies, water for at least seven to 10 days. Don't forget your pets, obviously. Elderly, make sure you have a plan for them. Preparing your home, making sure things are bolted down, won't fall, so they don't get, unfortunately, stolen. Use flex lines, secure televisions, computers. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Just want to make sure before we let you go. Okay.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you so much. That moves us along to council member meeting attendance reports, and we will start with our Orange County mosquito and vector control.
Thank you. So I have a lot, actually, tonight, and I will go fast. Before we start with that, last month I had mentioned that there were two human infections for West Nile virus, and unfortunately, that has jumped up to 12, none of which are in Orange County. However, that is a huge jump, and we're in the middle of this season right now. Along with, we had the typhus cases in Orange County, and we said that there were 11 flea-borne typhus cases, and now there are 12. So one of the things that I'm happy to see, and some of you residents might have been notified, but there is a scheduled spray for our area, parts of Villa Park and parts of Orange. So tomorrow, actually, tonight, from 2:30 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., and then Thursday from 2:30 a.m. to 5:30 a.m., there's going to be a larvicide and an adulticide spray that's from truck-mounted devices. So you'll hear, if you're up that early, you'll hear like the fan, or you'll hear a motor, but it's, the first one on Wednesday is going to be the adulticide and larvicide, and then on Thursday is just going to be the adulticide, and that is going to occur. So if you start at the corner of Collins and Laconia, so you're going to go north on Laconia, you're going to get to Lincoln, and you're going to go west on Lincoln, and then you're going to get to Handy, and you're going to go south on Handy, and then you're going to get to, back to Collins, and you're going to go east on Collins. So that rectangular area, that whole area, will get treated. So I'm happy to hear that. We don't have any active West Nile cases, knock on wood, but they have found an incidence, and I met with our inspector, which is, every area has a specific inspector. We had one, Pino, who was here for 20-something years, and he retired. Lovely individual. I worked with him a lot, some of you may have also. We have a new inspector. I met her personally. Her name is Leslie. She's got my number, I have her number, so again, if any residents, and I've done this before, where we've gone and met out at the resident's home. So, you know, really happy that she's responding very, very quickly to this. So that whole area is going to get treated, so just FYI. That brings me to this, which is really important, because, I don't know, for some of you may have remembered, but last month and the several months prior, we talked about the sterile insect technique. And I also mentioned that when I was chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, we had approved an increase in the Assessment District. And all of us pay Assessment District's fees, if you will, on our property taxes. And there's Assessment District One, and there's Assessment District Two, and I've gone into how those both got established, but everyone pays per household unit. And in order to fund this, the beginning of this program, which I will explain, we did, we did vote, the trustees did recommend a vote to the whole Board of Orange County Mosquito Vector Control, to raise the Assessment District 80 cents. So one of the districts went from 770-something, 773, I think, to eight, whatever that is. So that is going to fund the beginning and preparation of what this is, which I was very fortunate, back on Wednesday, August 10th, and I mentioned this last month, that as the Operations Chair Committee Chair, that I was invited to the Orange County Mosquito Vector Control District VIP Sterile Insect Technique Tour for the MedFly Prevention Program, which is controlled by, put on by, you know, funded by all of us taxpayers through the California Department of Food and Agriculture and the United States Department of Agriculture. And it is a program that has been going on since, I'm going to get my dates wrong, I'm sure, 1980-something. And this is a, it first used to be where they just did reactive, so they would get Medflies, and they'd have a MedFly increased population, and then there'd be billions of dollars worth of damage to the agriculture economy, and then they established this program. So we looked at this program as the pilot in order to understand what needs to be done in order to make this sterile insect technique applicable for us and mosquitoes. So I put together, in my geeky way, a little PowerPoint presentation to be able to share with you guys. So let me bring it up on mine, so I can go along with you. So we were met there with the, we're partnering this pilot program with the Greater LA County Vector Control, and so it was all the staff from Orange County Mosquito, several staff for the Greater LA County, and then the program director, whose name is Ian Walters, and he's an Agriculture Program Supervisor, too, who runs this entire program. So again, this is about the MedFly release, but this is going to be applied to the mosquitoes for the insect, the sterile insect technique. So next slide, please. So first, I'm going to go through the whole process. So first, what happens is there's two places where the pupae, the MedFly, we would do all of this part at the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, which is why the Assessment District got increased, so we could do this part at the Garden Grove facility. So pupae are flown in either from Hawaii or Guatemala. There's 2 million per box, so that Handle With Care box that has 2 million of these purple cylinders that you see in the bottom left. Just a couple of pictures showing, they come, they get flown in live, and then Ian Walters in the bottom picture is holding one of those tubes. These pupae have come from either Hawaii or Guatemala. Guatemala dyed and irradiated, so they're, they're all dyed, that pink color, and then they are irradiated, which makes them sterile, and then they're shipped to California. Next slide, please. They get processed into what's called this volumizer, which is the top picture in the top left, and once the bag gets opened, they get poured in there. This volumizer in the top quadrant separates them all out. That's why you see the colors, the purple that's there. Remember, these are all just the larvae, the pupae. And they're going to go on these trays, and the tray looks at the bottom left, that those little bumps are agar. So they, the larvae pupae need agar to survive, so what happens is, is the, see, if you can see, there's like a purple perimeter on that tray, and those are the pupae that were put in by this volumizer. Then those trays are stacked, and each, and then in the bottom right, there's a big tower of trays, and each one of those towers has 56 trays, which equals a million pupae. So there's a million little Medflies waiting to incubate. Next slide. Those towers are then brought into a very temperature-controlled, humidity-controlled container environment, and it's 70% humidity and roughly 79 degrees, and they stay in there and incubate in there for four days, but the pupae emerge after two days, and then they are, the extra two days is just to make sure everyone, you know, emerges. And this, I tried to take a picture, you probably can't see it, but they do a test grid, which is 100 squares, and so what you'll see is, and maybe at home if you're, you know, interested, or we can put it on the website or whatever. If you blow that picture up, you'll see the purple casing of the pupae, and then you'll see the MedFly. Now what's going to happen is, is that irradiation and that dye then gets absorbed into this frontal area lobe of this MedFly, so when they are studying them and they're mating, they can always do a test, and they'll be able to tell if it was a wild MedFly mating or if it was the sterile insect, because the dye will get transferred. And so the dye is a good way of an indicator to help identify with the population and how many are actually becoming successful. And it's usually about an 85% success of, from in the bag to this stage. And remember, this is all going to be translated to the mosquitoes, so you need to have an identifiable way to be able to determine if your sterile mosquitoes are actually out competing for the, with the wild males. Next slide. So now you've had, after four days, in these towers, they're moved into these super-cooled, and I mean super-cooled, and we went on a very hot day, so it was a lovely environment to be in. These super-cooled refrigerated containers and the pupae casings are vacuumed, leaving these sterile male Medflies in a hibernation-like state due to the cold. So they're not dead, they're alive, and this is the same thing we would do with the mosquitoes, hence, we need to, you know, make sure the refrigeration is good, we have to buy this big, huge gamma radiator. And so this whole picture, if you see on the top, the first slide has all the pink around the perimeter, those are all the casings. So those are the emerged, those are the discarded casings, and in the center, where the gentleman has his hand, those are all Medflies, but they're kind of in this like lethargic state. The next middle picture is they vacuum up all the casings, because when they end up putting them on the airplane, you don't want these casings falling, because you'll see, you'll have pink all over the place. And then another way they do it is they take those big trays and they hit them really hard on this metal container. Next slide. Oh, before you go, next slide. See in the bottom picture a little? So they were so cold, but Ian Walters took a handful of them, walked outside, and within six seconds, they all came to life and flew away. So it was really interesting. Next slide. So the top is that picture, and both top is a picture of the container that he was banging those trays with all the Medflies, and then on the right is what it actually looks like close up. So remember, we started with 2 million, and you'd get about an 85% success rate. So now they're ready to board the plane. So that picture in the middle is the plane, and if you see, you can see these two like fangs hanging from the bottom, and those are the chutes that the Medflies are going to get dropped out of as the plane flies over the, very specifically and strategically identified locations. Next slide. And so this is just a picture, again, of that container, cleaned, though, that you guys saw where he was banging the trays. Middle picture, it's loaded in the plane, and a close-up of these chutes. And it's really good for us to go to this and see this, because we have to calculate the speed at which we're going to, you know, drop these, these very expensive Medflies or mosquitoes. You don't want to do it, you know, too fast, too low, too high, because they'll end up going into the wings, and they'll end up hitting back up in the top, so it's a very, as much as may not seem like it, a very delicate science and specific science. And then the last one is, there's me in the blue shirt with the pink water bottle, but we just took a picture, this was at Los Alamos Joint Air Force Base, and the gentleman in the back in the plaid shirt is Ian Walters, the program director, and then everyone else there is Orange County Mosquito Vector Control staff. So I felt it was important to bring this to you guys so that you guys could understand. They are working, the Board of Directors is very much interested. Your son is out there. So I wanted to make sure you guys understood where the money's going and why, because I felt it was important, instead of just coming and saying, hey, we increased the Assessment District, or hey, we're, you know, going to possibly have to make a new Assessment District to fund the ongoing process of this, I felt it was important for you guys to see where this is going and where it's headed. A big shout-out to the Los Al, you know, Joint Forces Air Base for letting us come on there, and I am happy to take any questions, but we are rolling, and this will hopefully get us to that point where it's a program of maintenance and proactiveness instead of reactiveness, and especially since now we know that we've got these increased cases, it's even more important that we get on this. So hopefully I did that fast, we can get going, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I love your enthusiasm. Does anybody have any questions that they want to? Yeah, please.
Yes, so what the sterile insect technique, yes, so what it does, so only females bite, FYI. The males do not bite. Go figure. So what this is, this sterile insect technique, when you irradiate the males, it makes them sterile. The females don't know any different. So they will still lay eggs, but the eggs will be unviable. So it will definitely decrease, reduce the population. There will always be the random wild male that, you know, will be, have a successful mating, but this is, just like the MedFly, I mean, it was a $2 billion damage to the industry, and now it's much more manageable, and they do a lot around the ports and whatnot, because you have all the different produce and whatnot coming in from all the different areas, and they bring in different. It's above my pay grade. No, I think that was a, that was a, yeah, no, that was an actual like beetle or a bug or something, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I will move on to discuss Orange County Sanitation District. Three items I'll bring up. The engine and generator overhaul, this is a July 27th meeting that we attended for the sanitation district. OC SAN has eight internal combustion engines at the central generation facilities at plants numbers one and two that generate electricity using digester gas, which is a fantastic recycling program that the Orange County Sanitation District has implemented. During normal operating conditions, the central generation facilities supply approximately 60% of the electricity at plant number one and 95% of the electricity at plant number two. OC SAN awarded a contract to overhaul the four engines and five generators at plants numbers one and two. Overhauling the engines provides sufficient capacity to reliably produce the current levels of digester gas generated by the solids digestions process. Proper maintenance of the central generation facilities is critical to providing reliable and resilient plant operations and to benefit, to beneficially reuse biogas created by the treatment process to allow us to meet South County, South Coast Air Quality Management District requirements. There were a lot of questions on this one about looking at new generators or new engines for these things. The engines are massive, and being able to refurbish them, we, there are specific contractors who know how to do them very well, and this enables OC sanitation to get, keep the engines running for a really long time at a much reduced cost rather than repurchasing or trying to start all over from scratch, so really well-managed process there. The OC SAN also approved bargaining groups' contracts. The Memorandums of Understanding were approved for two bargaining groups, the Supervisory and Professional Management Group and the Orange County Employees Association. The contracts will be in place from July 1st, 2022, through July, through June 30th, 2025. The MOUs cover salary increases, medical benefits, and work scheduled among several other items. The discussions on these went back and forth for some time, and as is usual in these cases, and so it ended up with Memoranding of an Understanding that both parties were at least agreeable to. The Public Affairs Strategy, Strategic Plan was also approved. Well, that's, the Public Affairs Office is responsible for managing all internal and external communications for the agency, and a two-year strategic plan was developed and approved to ensure OC SAN messaging is shared with its customers and that all member agencies are kept informed. OC SAN strives to be a good neighbor and service provider, and the plan ensures it is achieved by staying connected with the public. They actually have increased some of the visibility on their website, which is ocsan.gov, and you can go learn about some of their initiatives. They also have an outreach program. If anybody is interested in learning more about OC SAN and what they do, they will allow the directors to nominate citizens from our city that could go learn about OC sanitation, what they do on a daily basis, and how important they are in our community. If anybody's interested, please contact me. That is going to be my report for OC SAN. Any questions? Moving on to Orange County Fire Authority.
I attended the July 28th general session meeting of the, and closed session meeting of the Orange County Fire Authority, and of particular importance to our community, and I think Orange County as a whole, of the items that were on the agenda, the major item, in my opinion, was the replacement of an aging fleet, excuse me, of helicopters, and it is a very, very big ticket number. And it is a very, very big ticket number. We're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of about 25 or so million dollars per helicopter, and the chief is looking to get two helicopters. Certainly something that our, our community can use. After all, we do have a year-round fire season, but there are some financial realities that play into it. And one of the things that also of note, I particularly brought up, because the easiest thing in the world is just to take what their staff does and accept it as gospel, because they do a fantastic job. And they did a good job with this item, but there was some missing pieces. And those missing pieces are, this is a much larger helicopter than what they're used to flying, obviously more expensive too. It has more capability and it's safer, which is great. However, if one of the major reasons why you fly it to transport patients, it can't be utilized for that purpose because you can't land it on, say, Michigan Community Hospital because that helipad is not weighted for that or rated for that type of helicopter, very big deal. That was overlooked, in my opinion. Some of the ground pads in and around other hospitals have obstacles in their way. That was overlooked and frankly, not addressed. So I raised those points, and staff has worked diligently with those entities to try to see if we can get some cooperation with at least the ground pads to see if we can get a, an agreement in place. It's not going to happen anytime soon, and also a funding source. I'm personally against the helicopters until we can get that figured out, because if you can't use them for one half of their design purpose, it doesn't make good financial sense to me. Not to mention the fact you have a whole union of firefighters that are looking to get a raise, and that are frankly, contractually do a raise here soon, and then other groups. Now, we may be, we may have different opinions on, on what those raises should be. I won't get into details because those are closed session matters, and in some cases very big differences. But nonetheless, if you don't have people to man the fire trucks and man the helicopters and provide first aid or emergency medical service, you, you have a big problem. And I think that staff got a little ahead of themselves on this one, and I was happy to highlight some things and hopefully avoid some, some issues. It is going to move forward. I voted against it along with another member of the board, but it is not a dead issue. And hopefully, we will be able to further dig into those issues that I raised to protect our community and protect our, our finances, because that's my job. So that's all I have. We'll be meeting this Thursday, if anybody's interested in attending. 6:00 PM at the Fire Authority.
Thank you. Next up is Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
No meeting.
Two years.
Also, Orange Unified School District City Schools Committee had no meeting. Law enforcement advisory.
No meeting.
Can I, just a quick question. I know we had mentioned the CERT. Is that something that the law enforcement, I know we'd looked at it previously. Do we have?
We've had a, a version of CERT in the past. It frankly did not gain a lot of traction. The Orange County Fire Authority was a wonderful volunteer to help train, but it never frankly got off the ground. It's something that I think our community could really benefit from. I'd love to have the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee meet in the very near future. I think that would be item number one, in my opinion, of the agenda, but I need the chairperson, who might be in the audience here, to, to get that together, and I think we can hopefully find a new group of volunteers. It's one of those things where you have a lot of folks that have volunteered for a lot of things and they got burned out. I think we just need to put that back out there and see if we can get a few, a few more folks to go through that training and buy off. And it may have a slightly different connotation because there were some legal issues that we had to deal with when we tried to really get a big group together.
Thanks. That wasn't staged, that was just a, seemed like it fit.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
So we met on July 27, and a couple of dates that everyone's been waiting for. Sanator will be on Saturday 12:03, December 3. That will also be the date for the Winter Wonderland later in the afternoon. The Dryland Boat Parade will be on Sunday, December 11. More information to follow on that. There is a candidate forum for the prospective candidates that is going to be October 5 in this room, and I believe Pat Betris is going to be the moderator for that. I think it starts at 5:00 or 5:30, but I'm not sure, they'll put out more information. And then there, October 23, they're trying to plan the volunteer appreciation party. So I'm not in charge of that, but, and then also, the logo for the foundation looks like it's getting a facelift, and we were presented with some options by Mark Kuli, and he's gonna, and they all look great, and so he's taking some of those suggestions, and he's coming back, and we meet tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll get another look at that. And just FYI, we checked the bylaws, and they do not need council approval to change their logo. So that's already been checked, and they're good to go.
Fair enough.
That's it.
Housing Legislation Committee?
No meeting.
The Bridges at Kramer?
No meeting.
And then Senior Citizens Advisory.
No meeting.
Okay. That moves us along to public comments section. At this time, we'll review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each addenda item. So if you have something for a specific agenda item, we'll call you at that point. Steve, is there anyone that wrote in or, or is present from the public that would like to comment just in public?
No, we have no general comments. We do have a number of speakers on specific items that we'll call in future.
Okay. Then we'll move on.
I was going to talk about school traffic.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted that under the Serrano issue.
Just the regular school traffic.
Okay, and my, my apologies.
Donna Buxton, please. For those who don't know you, please state your name.
Pardon?
Please state your name for those who don't know.
Good evening, I'm Donna Buxton. Good evening, Mayor Zimmerman, city council members, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief resident update about what is happening with our school traffic along Serrano Avenue. As you know, school has started, and I'm very pleased to report that the morning drop-off process is off to a great start. The Dodson Crosswalk was removed right before school started, and as expected, we are seeing parents and students adapt to the change. On the first day of school, we observed and redirected almost 40 children to use the James Crosswalk at the cut-through. And yesterday, we had nine attempt to use that crosswalk. So we're seeing them adapt and go to the correct area to cross the street. Traffic flow has also been vastly improved, in our opinion, due to the temporary parking restriction that's been implemented in the Serrano and Nichols area. This is the area for which parking restrictions will be considered later this evening on the agenda. The high school parking that has occurred in this area, the removal of that not only improves the situation for the residents, but it has contributed to improve traffic flow around the school. It enables the parents to move into those areas and use it as a loading zone, and then exit the area and not even be in the congested area around the school. So it has been extremely beneficial. While my public comment is about the school traffic, I do want to voice my support for the parking restrictions, just in the interest of time, because of the improvement in traffic flow. Now unfortunately, we don't have that same great news in the afternoon. The pickup process tends to be more complicated because everybody comes at the same time. And in the morning, it tends to be spread out by quite a bit. So we'll need to work on some communication to parents to let them know of other areas that might be more beneficial to be able to get in and out of the area and to reduce the most congested areas on Serrano. I will remind you that our traffic study identified that the Nichols and Serrano Crosswalk area was a major traffic choke point, and we did get approval for the crosswalk, if you recall, and we have gone through the design stage for that. However, the project is now wrapped up in a larger storm drain and road rehabilitation project that won't take place till next, after the school year is done. So we're going to have to wait and see what will happen with that once all of those changes occur. And in the meantime, we're going to continue to observe and look for other opportunities to try to redirect parents into different areas to improve the traffic flow. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this project. With the start of the school year, I believe we are realizing some improvements from our work last year. But as Steve Franks and I always agree, this is a, an ongoing iterative process, and we continue to observe and, and tweak the, the system as, as we see issues and, and just continue to watch. That is my report tonight, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you for your leadership on this issue and many other issues.
Thank you.
Involved in our city.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Assuming there are no other, anybody else want to speak? Okay. We'll now move on to our agendas, public hearings. Our first hearing is to review and waive the reading in full of all ordinance and his ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you. This is the monthly item we have to expedite the meeting process, allows us to move forward without having to read items in detail, so we recommend approval.
Councilmember, any questions?
Soundmiff.
Is anybody here want to speak on this? Okay. So we have a, a motion.
Second.
And a second. So having, we could vote.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Steve. Our next hearing is a conditional use permit at 2022-01 at 10101 Center Drive. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. I'll open it up and I'll pass it over to the planning group. Basically, as you mentioned, this is a, this is a conditional use permit for 10101 Center Drive. Item number three is our corresponding variance request for that same address, so there'll be some linkage here. I would, we would handle them separately because they, ones of, one is a CUP, the second one is a variance. With that though, I'll pass it over to Justin.
Yes. Yeah, so good evening. Before you are.
Justin, can you?
Yes. Sorry. Thanks. Before you are two related applications, a variance and a conditional use permit. The applications, as Steve mentioned, involve 10101 Center Drive, which is currently improved with a single-story residence with an attached two-car garage on a 20,000 square foot lot located in the E4 zone. And the property owners are Mr. and Mrs. Orta, and the applicant is Robert Thornton, who is also the architect on the project. The focus of these applications is a detached 1,351 square foot, single-story accessory structure, which is proposed to be constructed in the rear yard of the property. And the detached accessory structure consists of two vehicle spaces, a small bathroom and a recreational vehicle space as well for a larger vehicle like an RV. So with that being said, I'm going to now present the conditional use permit first. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, a detached accessory structure is limited to 15 feet in height, garage doors are limited to eight feet in height, and five or more vehicle garage spaces require a CUP. And the owner is requesting approval for the following. First is to exceed the maximum allowable height for detached accessory structure from 15 feet to 19 feet 8 inches. Second, to exceed the maximum allowable height for garage doors from eight feet to 14 feet. And third, to request five car, five garage spaces, which is a deviation of one from the four that are normally permitted, without a CUP. The property owners submitted the CUP application because their large recreational vehicle needs substantial clearance to fit into a covered garage space, and the garage would provide a covered space for their vehicles out of the public view. Public notice, public hearing notices for this variance and CUP requests were mailed and posted at least 10 calendar days before the meeting. It was also published in a local newspaper. And to date, staff has received a supplemental letter of justification along with plans of the proposed detached accessory building. We have also received four letters of support for the variance and CUP, but only one is in the exhibit because I just got three yesterday. So if you want me to go into detail about those extra letters, I can do that.
Is there anything of note in those letters that, are they just, we supported, or is there specifics?
So they're the same letters, but they're signed by the, the properties behind the subject property.
Okay.
And we have not received any letters of opposition.
Okay.
So with that in mind.
Sorry, they're from different residents behind, or if they're, all three are from the same?
Yeah, so they're from diff, three different properties.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Off of, I think, Windsor and West, the other street, Windsor and Westchester, Winchester, sorry. So with all of that in mind, city staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-01 because the property owners need additional parking spaces for their vehicles, and the taller garage door and building height would allow enough clearance for their recreational vehicle. And please know that approval of the CUP and denial of the variance would allow the property owners to construct the proposed garage with the modifications stated in the CUP, provided that they submit new plans adhering to the required 10-foot side and rear yard building setbacks normally required for detached accessory structures. So that concludes my staff report, and I'll open it to questions.
Councilmembers.
So just for clarification.
Sure.
The CUP is for the height, the, the height of the facility, of the unit, and the variances for the setback adjustments, and that's handled in item number three. So we'll handle them separately, the CUP first as item number two. So just for clarification, one does not preclude the other, it would be at the, the decision of the owner if they wanted to continue forward, if one or the other was not approved.
Great.
But we are recommending approval of the CUP, which would be the height.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions?
No, no question, but I would like to comment. So I, I went to the property and met with the homeowners, and this is the house that used to have all the, for those that aren't aware, it used to have all the old cars out there, and they have done a fantastic job of beautifying that home and the, the neighborhood and, and the homes next to it, and so we really appreciate all that. I am in support of this CUP. I've seen their beautiful RV, and it does need a nice little, little house. And, and I believe that, you know, they have done this the right way. They have not done the ask for forgiveness instead of permission. I, I love that our residents are trying to improve their properties and, and make it so that it's going to match and presentable, and their backyard is stunning, by the way. So this would definitely match that, and I, I am in support of this.
I haven't seen the backyard, maybe I'll have to, to check. I, I run by there, so I've seen the, the front, and I'm familiar with the property, and also I'm always really appreciative when somebody, somebody does take the time to improve a lot in Villa Park as much as they have. So it looks great, and I also am in favor, so. Question?
That's, I guess Ray or someone, does this structure qualify as an ADU here in Villa Park also?
No, it does not.
Does not, okay. Is it because of the square footage?
It would have to also have a kitchen, and it would have to have its own address, and it would also be too tall.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I too want to commend the homeowner for beautifying that place, it's gorgeous. So thank you very much for that. Is the homeowner here?
Yes.
Would you like to say anything?
I was just curious, looking at your house. Is it the same type?
No.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Ishmael Orta, along with my wife Marlene and daughter Marissa. We moved in about a year or so ago, and as you have said, it took a lot of time and effort to clean it up and get rid of all the old trees and bushes and hazards that were around, and we're just trying to make it more beautiful, obviously by putting the RV inside of a building so people don't have to look at it, and the other car inside the building. And the way it's set up, it would really obviously benefit us to have it. And the way it's set up, it would really, obviously benefit us to have it five-foot setback so the RV can go in at an angle not hit our roof as we're going in. So, we're trying to make everything aesthetically pleasing to the eye when you look at the house and everything's directed right. So, I appreciate you letting us have an opportunity to beautify the place and keep it going.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I also would like to add, when I met with them, they had just the one letter that was presented in the staff report, and, and for me, if you've gone back and looked at any of my history on voting, I'm always about what the neighbors think because they're the ones that have to live with it or next to it. And I did recommend that they go get letters, hopefully of support from their neighbors, and I am very, you know, appreciative and thankful, and thank you for doing that. And it definitely is that goodwill measure that I had mentioned to you, so thank you for doing that.
I assume for a moment too, that if we move it in and move it over, it's going to be difficult to get that RV into that garage, isn't it? I don't know, I mean.
Did you see the property, Robbie?
Yeah, I did, but I, I can't tell how far it is.
Well, so there was two little markers on the, on the cement, so if, if the, if the setback is not approved, if the variance is not approved, then they're going to hit that corner of the-
That's what I thought, yeah.
And then they're going to go into that beautiful fountain, which would be a shame, but, but anyways, so, I, if we can talk about the variance part now too, am I allowed to talk about the variance?
We should probably deal with the CUP first.
We'll wait for the variance.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
Couple of questions for staff. We have a number of RV garages around the city. Are any others this high or higher?
Councilman, yeah, I know that since I've been here, we processed a couple of them, and I can't recall if there was a, a use permit that was requested to allow it to go higher. As Justin said, you know, anything over 15 feet for an detached accessory structure would require a conditional use permit. Right now, I'm drawing a blank. I don't recall, maybe one, probably a couple of years ago, where they needed the vertical dimension to accommodate RV, but that's the only one that comes to mind. I can't recall the name of the street.
What about garage door heights? Do we, have we had a, so that folks could have RV garages, have they?
Yes, I do, yeah. That one project that I'm, that I have in my mind right now, they requested it go higher than eight feet 1 inches, which is the maximum allowable. And to go higher, a CUP is required for that.
Correct. But did the, the previous one have to go up as high as this one?
I can't recall what the dimensions are, but yeah, it would be, I, I'm guessing now, it's like 14, 15 feet.
Okay. Well, what I'm getting at is, you know, we have a number of RV garages going in, and I'm sure in the future we're going to have more, so that future applicants don't have to go through the CUP process. Could we go back and look at the design requirements for an RV garage and maybe modify our, our zoning code so that we can have a, you know, a special requirements for RV garages, so, you know, again, so people don't have to go through the CUP process?
Yeah, we could, we could definitely take a look at it. These RV garages, what I've understood from the past is the aesthetics of it. We just don't want to see big garages out in the front yard area like a normal garage. And so, what we do is we encourage applicants, property owners, to push it back as far as they can on their property so that they're not as readily visible from the public right of way. So, we could certainly incorporate that as part of the design guidelines.
The, an adjustment to the height limitations and an adjustment to the garage door limitations for RV parking garages?
So, yeah, we could come back, but that would require a vote of the council to change the, that requirement.
If we could get a staff, staff recommendation-
Right. Sure, we can come back. We can do that, yes.
It might, you know, save, you know, and also, I'm sure a lot of folks, when they come in and they find out they have to go through the CUP process, they might be put off a bit. And, you know, we try to be welcoming of people improving their property, so if we could have a, you know, look at our standards, see if we can make some adjustments that might make it a little bit easier for folks. Is that, that fair, Steve?
Yeah, that's great. We'll come back.
Is that not to, do we need two council members to recommend something like that?
No, that's something, the staff can come back and bring forward.
Right.
It's a potential adjustment to our zoning ordinances.
Great. Thank you. Sir? Anything else? Was there anybody else from the public that wanted to speak on this? No? Any other council member discussion? Okay. Hearing that, I'll close public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So, to be clear, we're voting a number three, which is the CUP.
No, number two.
Number two, I'm sorry.
We are on item number two, the conditional use permit 2022-01 at 10101 Center Drive.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second, if we could vote. Steve, could you read the results?
Passes by zero.
Thanks, Steve. So, then we'll move on to the next hearing, variance 2022-05 at 101 Center Drive. This is the variance. Staff, is there anything you wanted to add to this one?
Yes, so the variance is a request for approval to reduce the side yard setback along the south property line and the rear yard setback from 10 feet to five feet. City staff, so generally, variances are considered when properties have unique constraints like difficult physical characteristics, an irregular shape, difficult topography or easements. And in the case of this property, it is regularly shaped, it's flat, there are no on-site easements. And so, after carefully studying the subject property, the neighborhood, and the zoning code, city staff does recommend denial of the variance because of the characteristics of the subject property, and we just could not make findings to support it. So, I will now open the floor to questions.
So, legally, we can still approve it even without stat, without a justification? Or do we need to provide justification in order to legally approve this?
So, variances are a figment of state law, right? And there are certain requirements as listed in the attached resolution, which must be met, which are, it's not a granting of a special privilege, there are unique circumstances justifying the approval of the variance and the like. There are five of them. There are, and usually those are related to physical characteristics of the property, i.e. Justin said, a sloped lot, a triangular lot, things of that nature, which make development of a property more difficult because of those characteristics. And we want people to be able to use, and the law wants people to be able to use and not be penalized if they own irregular lots. Now, there is some more recent case law, the Craig case out of Santa Barbara and others, that talk about existing characteristics of property, including existing structures that could lead to the approval of a variance if, like I said, the demolition of a building to add additional part of the building would be required. You don't want to have to make people tear down their property to build something else, which have been used to support variances. So, if the council were interested in doing that, we would like some statements on the record that show those facts, which, which justify the approval of the variance. We would incorporate those into the resolution, and then that's what would be approved if the council deemed it so for the variance.
Thank you, Todd. Perfect. So, now council members, questions of staff?
I have a question.
Please.
Could you please read the addresses of the three support letters that you received?
Yes, so... The three that I received yesterday are from 18221 Winchester, 18232 Windsor, and 18262 Windsor. Yes, and then the fourth was the one that was in the, the exhibit, and that was the neighbor at a 10121 Center.
You said, the third one was 18262 Windsor, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that's the neighbor that I had, had mentioned to you, right?
North.
The one that's right on the other wall? Is that that one? Yeah. Okay. The one that you said the gentleman works during the day? Yeah, that one. Okay, good. That's, that was important to, to me, to make sure that you spoke with that neighbor, so I appreciate you, you getting that. And again, you know, I, I would consider that corner of the house. If, if, if they don't get the 10, the five-foot setback, you know, I, I'm not sure how easy it's going to be to put that, put that in, and they, and then they'd have to come forward five more feet from what they want. So, I, I, as again, you can see by all my voting records, I'm very much about property rights, owners' rights, and appreciate them following the proper and right way to do it, and they have the support of their neighbors. So, I am in agreement and, and, you know, show my support for this.
Council members, other questions of staff? No? So, I know where you're here. If you would, I'd like to hear about these construction plans in terms of how they impact your existing residents. Would you mind stepping up and letting us put that on record?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Thornton. I'm the architect and the applicant. And to speak about, like, the variance, where I think it could be open for discussion, where pushing the garage back and allowing that five-foot rear yard setback would keep it farther away from the street, which is, I think, what you want to achieve with a larger structure. And then also, the other portion, which would hopefully help us with the variance, was allowing the five-foot setback on the side to avoid an existing roof eve as they back the RV up as well. Hopefully, those would be two conditions that will hopefully meet the requirements for a variance to allow it to get approved.
Okay. I guess I'm, I want to make sure we're getting the, the legal aspect of this down. Are, are we meeting the conditions to approve a variance, given irregularity, or?
So, the, the ultimate judge of whether a variance is warranted based upon all the facts is the, the city council. That being said, I don't mean to punt. I think if I went into court, I would be able to defend it if the council approved it.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. Thanks, sir.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay. So, is there any other council discussion on this item? No?
Yeah, I, I have some discussion. The, the side yard, backyard, and front yard setbacks are pretty fundamental to our zoning. The zoning that we've had since the city was established back in 1962 has served us well. We have, you know, it's pretty well-recognized that we have a pretty nice community here, that houses are laid out in proper proportion, there's adequate space between, between houses and so forth. Irrespective of the adjacent neighbors not having specific concerns, the real, reality is that in the long term, we're all renters. You know, we're going to be here for a short period, you know, some period of time, you know, for, for 20 years. I mean, the city's going to be here forever, we hope. And the zoning has helped us, you know, again, develop a very nice, relaxed community. Not are we, not only is, does this project propose to reduce the side yard and rear yard setback to five feet, but we're also proposing to have a very tall structure, five feet from the property line, and right in the face of the adjacent neighbors. They may not care, but it will affect our, you know, the community going forward. I can't support just disregarding our zoning code like that. I think it's something that we have to, we should defend rather than give away at every, at every request. So, I, I can't support this.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments?
I'm of the same mindset. I want to commend the, the property owners. I remember the frankly disaster that that home was before they, they moved in, and I commend them for all the work that they've done, but I can't get behind something that staff does not approve and cannot find an irregularity. So, absent something more than what we have here, I, I can't support that either for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just looking at the Google, Google Maps, so if anybody else wants to speak, I just need a second, but... Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a-
We did, we did make sure that no one wanted to speak in the audience, correct?
I did ask if anybody else wanted to speak.
Wanted to verify.
Yep.
For the record.
Yep. Typically, that's before the council member discussion. I've already had, great. So, having closed public hearing, is there a motion on this matter?
I'd like to move to, to approve.
I'll second.
So, we need to clarify, because the, the recommended action as printed in the agenda is to deny. So, if you were to approve that, you would be denying it, so it's a double negative, if you will. But since it's published in that way, we would have to make an alternative motion by the council to, to basically oppose, or go against the staff recommendation and oppose, and support a variance, so that would have to be the motion, basically. So, it would not be a motion to approve or deny, it's an alternative to what's being recommended by staff.
I move the alternative.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thanks for the clarification.
So, the motion that you're saying is an alternative would be to deny the, deny, not to deny, to approve the variance and, you know, in, as opposed to what the staff is recommending and is printed in the agenda.
Yeah.
That's clarifications, we're all on the same page.
Same page. Got it.
Second.
So, there is a motion, an alternative motion to approve that the variance, and a second?
Nope, not to approve the variance.
Yes. Exactly.
Okay, okay. Approve the variance.
Exactly.
Approve the variance, yeah.
Go against the staff.
I got it.
Go against the staff recommendation.
So, the staff moderation is, is relevant if you're an alternative motion to approve the variance.
Yes.
That's what the action is being voted upon.
Yes. Okay.
You're approving the variance.
Approve the variance.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. We have a motion and a second. Can we vote? Oops. Steve, could you read the results?
So, that passes by a 3-2 vote. Councilman Colacott and Mayor Pro Tem Rosini in opposition, so the variance would be approved on a 3-2 vote. And just to clarify, so, a resolution will be prepared, which incorporates the statements sort of I discussed, and that were put on the record pertaining to the existing location, configuration-
Perfect.
And aesthetic of the house, yep. And that does not return to the council.
And that does not return. Great. Moving on, our next hearing is on tentative parcel map 2022-148 at 9662 Crestview Circle. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. I'm just going to punt right over to Justin, keep it moving.
Yes, so the application involves 9662 Crestview Circle, a 41,559-square-foot property in the E4 zone. The property is currently improved with a 4,400-square-foot, single-family dwelling, a pool, and a gazebo structure. The property owner and applicant is Mr. Shai Khan, who also submitted the application with the help of Ryan Walker of Raw Civil Design. The application is requesting to subdivide 9662 Crestview Circle into two parcels. Parcel one is the existing 9662 Crestview Circle and will be, would be 21,186 square feet in size, while parcel two would be assigned a yet unknown address and will have ax, future access off of Cannon Street, and that parcel would be 20,372 square feet in size. The current single-family dwelling and all other improvements at 9662 Crestview Circle would meet all applicable zoning requirements, including but not limited to Florida area ratio, building setbacks, and lot coverage if the tentative parcel map is approved. And the new parcel two would yield enough buildable area for a future, future, single-family dwelling, and future access to the new property would be granted off of Cannon Street. Furthermore, the existing gazebo structure would conform to the required setbacks within the proposed property lines. The applicant is requesting the tentative parcel map with the intent of eventually constructing a future, single-family dwelling on parcel two. And pursuant to the zoning ordinance, we did mail out public notices for this tentative parcel map request, which were also posted in a local newspaper 10 days prior to the public hearing. To date, city staff has received a supplemental letter of just- To date, city staff has received a supplemental letter of justification along with plans for the proposed tentative parcel map, as well as a conceptual plan showing the buildable area of parcel two. And the conceptual plan of the possible building area on parcel two does indicate that the future parcel would be capable of a future, single-family dwelling that would be able to conform to the city's zoning requirements. And both new parcels will be at least 20,000 square feet in size, which is the minimum required for the E4 zone. To date, city staff has not received any letters of support or opposition to the project. So with that in mind, and with careful review of all applicable zoning codes and with careful consideration taken to the neighborhood more broadly, city staff recommends approval of tentative parcel map 2022-148. And I will now open that up to any questions or comments.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Council members, do you have questions of staff? Questions?
While he contemplated, I rethought.
I'm, I'm concerned about the, the access on Cannon. I know we have one recently constructed, or maybe it's still under construction, house along Cannon that does have access to Cannon. How do, how did they configure their, their access? It's very busy street. And how do they configure their access so that, not to create a traffic hazard at the entry to Cannon?
I would have to look at the plans for the property. I don't know if, I know there was talk about, from engineering, about potentially a horseshoe driveway being safer. But I'm not sure how, what the configuration is of the neighboring property.
Is the property owner here?
Mayor, council members. Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you.
My name is Shaez Khan.
Hi. I, I have a couple of questions. Have, have you spoken with your neighbors about this?
I have.
And have you asked them for any kind of letter of support?
I have not, but they are in support of it.
So what do you plan to do with the second lot? Like what is your, what is your plan? It's to build a home?
Eventually, yes.
And then are you going to flip the home or you? Because just want to point out, we have no short-term rentals in Villa Park. So I want to make sure we're not setting up for some sort of.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, you know, there's a, there's a number of factors that have to be considered. I mean, the lot would need to be, you know, significantly graded. You know, council member Colacott brought up a good point. I could grant access, you know, from Crestview to that property. You know, it's not wide enough to, to make it a, a flat lot, but there is enough access that could be granted for a driveway. But that would require significant grading because it is, it is a steep, you know, hill.
I believe one or two of your neighbors have driveways that go down the.
Correct. One property on the market currently that's, you know, for sale, that has, has such a driveway.
Well, as, as I mentioned, you know, I'm, I'm an advocate for, you know, property owners' rights. But, but I also almost, as equally, am very concerned about neighbors. And it concerns me that you don't have either anyone here to represent and say that they're in agreement or support, or at minimum, producing some sort of letters of support. So for, for me, I'm uncomfortable supporting something that I have no idea if the neighbors are going to agree or not. And, and that, for me, not, I can't speak for anyone, then that's a very important factor for me.
Sure.
Andrew, I forgot with this SB nine or 10, don't they, don't property owners by right have the authority now to split their lots?
This is not being requested as an SB nine split. This is being requested as a regular lot split. And there are certain factors and conditions that go into such lot splits. My understanding is this is a clean parcel map split.
Yes.
Yeah. So theoretically, yes, if they went through that process.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in terms of just splitting it, it meets the, our zoning requirements for 20,000 square foot minimum lot. So there's, you know, and, and my only, only real concern is the, the access, the safety of the access. And if the access were to, along Cannon Street, I'd like to see a, you know, and this is for a future council to decide, but a, I'd like to see an engineering study to verify that we're not creating a safety hazard up for the traffic coming down Cannon. But seems like a good idea to split, split a one-acre lot like that.
Is that something we can ask for in the future? Or is that something, once they've split it, that they've got the right to do what they want with it?
You could make it a condition of approval of the parcel map.
Okay.
Thanks.
I, I had questions about retention walls and things like that too, because that's a fairly steep piece of property. And, you know, when Ray and I talked, there were certain requirements for the city in terms of height of retention walls and things like that. It seemed like to me you'd almost have to build them much higher to, to, or push the property back and grade it down so that in your backyard almost, to accommodate what's going on in front. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that and not knowing what the engineering studies are and so forth on that. I'm not sure I'm comfortable either.
Yeah, I know Ryan Walker's a civil engineer and, and, you know, he did the survey on the property. I would need to build a five-foot retaining wall and then grade it down.
I'm sorry, how high?
Five foot.
Five foot?
Five foot retaining wall, yeah. And then I would need to grade the property down. So it's nothing, you know, the neighbor next door is, I built, I believe, built like a nine-foot retaining wall. So.
But whatever retaining wall you put in would have to be built to city standards and so forth. So.
Correct. Correct.
Quick question. Is there, it doesn't seem like there's any sort of urgency on this for you to, to get this done right away. Would you consider going to neighbors or having the city help you contact neighbors and reaching out to see if you could get letters of support or?
That's, that's not a problem.
What I'm suggesting is if we delayed this a month and then came back once we had those things, would that be a hardship or a trouble for you?
No, wouldn't be a hardship. You know, Ryan suggested sending a form letter to three of the neighbors and, you know, getting them to sign it. One neighbor was traveling, you know, overseas. And the other neighbors, you know, I spoke with both of them. I'm friendly with all of them and they have no objections. So it's not an issue for me to produce a form letter.
Okay.
I, I would, I would appreciate that. Just, and then let's, you know, I always like to do, let's turn the tables. Let's pretend it was one of your neighbors. And even though you're in support, I think you would like to know that the council is, you know, is, is considerate of the fact that we haven't heard from you as the neighbor's trying to.
Right.
So it, it would just, I think, cover all the bases and make sure that everyone knows exactly what's going on. So.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, I could have exercised my right to just do an SB nine and not, you know, just a ministerial approval.
Yep.
But, you know, I'm just going that extra step to create more value in it.
Yep. And I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Just for the record, so you know, the SB nine is a minute, like you just mentioned, it's a ministerial process that would not come before the city council?
Yes.
So that would be something that would be approved. So just what he's mentioning here, he's in good faith. He's coming forward and bringing this to the council. But an SB nine would not require council approval.
Right.
Yep.
So that's sort of, if it met those conditions as mentioned by Todd. So that's sort of a different process.
That's one question I have in speaking about the traffic concerns. Because I, I think there's a tremendous amount of value, both for you as well as future residents and, and the city to have that parcel divided. So, you know, I, I look forward to that, assuming we can get over some, some neighbor notification issues and involvement. But the traffic piece is really sticking out in my mind. And I think that might get in the way of an SB nine approval if we, I mean, if we, if a traffic engineer has not looked at that, that's a significant issue because that, the speeds coming down that hill are incredible. I don't want to set up the city to defend a potential fatal collision lawsuit because we didn't check all our boxes. And look, I know people can sue anybody for anything in California. We know well. But I wonder if we shouldn't really evaluate that. And obviously the hillside will be looked at extensively.
That would be dependent upon the development, the proposed development of it. That's different from the, the lot split itself. Although you could make that a condition of the lot split, that that be a certain type of access or whatever. But the development is not being proposed at this time, nor is the project being defined. So he's, he's just simply splitting the lot. So if you want to, as Todd suggested, include that as a condition, that that be an element that be reviewed as part of the process and that does not impede or create potential problems for Cannon, that would be something you could add on to there. But, but in essence, right now, until he tells us exactly what the proposal is, because he's talked about two alternative, and one would be no problem, obviously, for Cannon because it would be an access route on Crestview.
Up Crestview.
So that wouldn't be, so it's, we need to, we need to work with him on the development issue. But you could certainly include that if you were to go forward. And we could include that should the council want to address that next month and have that as part of, okay, we'll approve it, but we want this safety issue addressed as part of the approval process.
I, I'm in favor of that and postponing 30 days just to get more buy-in and a little more light on the subject. Thank you.
And as part of the traffic, and as part of the traffic discussion and review, I mean, you would obviously require an easement over the one lot to the other lot to traverse to the other street. And that's usually done. It's part of the track map. The easement is reflected on the parcel map. So if you're going to discuss all that, you know, now is a good time. I mean, yeah, you can condition it, depend what develops, you know. But that's fair to also look at in the parcel map process if there are concerns. And you're right, you do come screaming down Cannon. Not you personally, you, the generic.
I had one more question, which just in terms of this particular lot, we would, in the lot split, we would, would we assign an address to this? And then does that also talk about utilities, like adding?
That's part of the development process.
Just the development process.
That's, we would work with, we work with the fire authority, et cetera, to establish an address. And there's a lot, there's a lot of issues in establishing an address. The first step is to split the lot and then, then you go through a process with the county, et cetera.
Great.
So there's a, it creates a new parcel and changes, the assessor visits them. There's all sorts of issues that are processed by kicking off. But this is, this is step one.
Yeah. And to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, the neighbor has access to utilities from Crestview that are on my property.
Uh huh.
So, you know, I've granted an easement.
Got it.
So, you know, utilities, it would, wouldn't be an issue for me.
Great. Thanks. I've already thought of that. I really appreciate your bringing this to us and being amenable. So.
So what we'd be doing is establishing a new E4 lot, correct?
Yes.
With, with all the, you know, easements and other zoning requirements for an E4.
Yeah, it's in a D4 zone. And the zone, we, we're not changing the zoning on it. We're just changing, changing the lot. So we're creating a lot split.
Okay, good.
Okay. So then at this point, I'm going to recommend we postpone for 30 days or until next.
Continued for, the public hearing would be continued for a month, date certain, which would be our next city council meeting.
And you would like letters of support?
I, I would. I think it would be helpful, especially then later on, when you do get to that process of, hey, I'm going to build a house or whatever. The neighbors are already well aware and you can say, I've been working with them for the past two years. And, and if I'm up here, great. If, if it's a whole new council, they'll have that to look back on as well.
Right.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Just so you, do you make sure that nobody else wanted to speak here on this?
Did anybody else want to speak on this matter?
Todd's having a meltdown here.
Seeing none. You're right. In this particular instance, I actually, we brought you up ahead of calling everybody else up. You're right.
But also for the continuance, if we could have a formal motion to continue?
I'll make a formal motion to continue.
End vote.
Councilmember Miles, the only thing I wanted to add was, you know, the reason why I didn't pursue those actual letters is, A, it's a form letter, which doesn't really mean much. And B, if they were to object, then I would just go and do a ministerial approval of SB nine, right? Which, which wouldn't prohibit me from building a single-family home. And, you know, the only thing that would be different is, is literally that's its own, it's on its own parcel.
It's perception.
Hundred percent. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Oh, we.
No, we already had the motion and a second.
Oh, you already got it?
Yeah.
So it's a motion to continue until the, does anyone have the next meeting? Do you have a calendar, the fourth Tuesday? I'm not.
It's September 27th.
September 27th meeting. Public notice and that would be, the public hearing is continued until that date.
That's it. Can we vote?
We've all voted.
Oh, son of a. Passes 5-0.
Mr. Khan, thank you again very much.
Thank you. That passed. Thanks, Steve. Sir?
There's quite a few folks here for new business. Do we want to switch things around maybe and push things up or is the next one?
I think we're almost there. We're at consent calendar and then we're there.
Okay.
Appreciate that. So moving on to consent calendar. I didn't skip anything, did I? Good, good, good. We'll now consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items five through 12 that you'd like to remove from the consent calendar? Or the public? Is there anybody that wants anything from five to 12 removed from the calendar?
No, sir.
Hearing none?
Still moved.
I'm looking for a motion in a second. We got it. Excellent. We can vote?
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Steve. There we go. And on to new business. So our first item in business is a consideration of Resolution 2022-3558, Resolution Amending the Master Traffic, Master Parking and Traffic Resolution, Re-establishing Parking Prohibited Areas on Fitch and Ranch Road and Consideration of the Fitch and Ranch Road Gate. Staff, could you please read the staff report?
Okay, I, real quick, Melissa, could you put the map? Just so we're, this is sort of where we're talking. Okay, as you recall, the item number 13 is the addressing Fitch and Ranch Road. And we've received a number, you guys have all received at some point, contacts from residents. And this has been an issue that's been addressed probably as far back as the early 2000s relative to Fitch and Ranch Road. Specifically, the issue is on Fitch and Ranch Road, it's a very long, as you see the yellow there, you'll see it has a, it runs parallel to Wanda Road. It attracts, based on there are no specific residents on that road, it does attract a lot of cars parking on there. And what's happened is, in the past, that issue has been addressed with the creation of a gated, gated wall, if you will, or gate, a combination lock that's on Collins, corner of Collins and Wanda. And typically what happens is people are walking in and out and parking along Fitch and Ranch Road from outside the area. Residents have expressed some concern, a lot of concern actually, over the years and more specifically of late. There's been some potential, some criminal activity, tire slash, those kinds of things and, and along the road. So what we've, in looking into it, we discovered that years ago, this was at one time going, had parking restrictions, no overnight parking. And we thought about that. And then I, I guess at the time, they decided to put the fence in and the gated fence to stop the parking as a problem. And so they did not, they removed the no parking restriction, no overnight parking. In addressing it and looking back on it now, the problem has resurfaced. And it's our recommendation, after evaluating the situation and talking, that we reestablish no overnight parking along Fitch and Ranch Road. And we believe that that establishment of that, or re-establishment of that restriction, plus the enforcement by the sheriff would actually solve a lot of the problem of people parking along there and potential vandalism and those kinds of things. Now, the fence is another issue. It is our belief that we, this as a first step, we should move and let's implement this step and see what the result will be. Then we have the option then of locking the fence down the road. People have suggested, and I will just put to rest real quick, why don't you just keep changing the lock and the combination? Well, that lasts about as far as the first phone call goes because everybody passes along the combination. So we spend a lot more time pass, you know, changing the combination than it stays effective for. So it really doesn't serve a purpose to continually change. And then you get a lot of irate pedestrians or whoever calling us saying, you changed the combination and didn't tell us or whatever. So what we're recommending at this time is to reestablish the no overnight parking along Fitch and Ranch Road, but postpone the consideration of, or not do anything at this point as far as locking the fence permanently or chain locking it, so permanently locking off. We have received a number of phone calls, input. I believe there's people in the audience that want to speak as well. At some point, when, when you're ready, I've received one, two, three, four written correspondence regarding this issue. But again, our recommendation at this time, and we would be prepared to answer your question. Ashley has done a lot of research on it. There's gone back and forth on this issue a while. We'd recommend re-establishing no overnight parking. And no overnight parking consists of, Ashley, is it 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM on Fitch and Ranch Road? And we would then post signs accordingly and enforce accordingly and come back to the council at some point if we had not, that gate had not solved the problem. You can actually see the little gate there is where it is positioned. And we would recommend that we move forward. it is positioned. And we would recommend that we move forward at this time. But we're prepared to answer any questions. And I do at some point need to read these into the record when you're ready.
We'll do this in order. So first, we'll do additional questions of staff from council members. Robbie?
We, we took the liberty of notifying all the residents on Tacoma, Beckley, Helena, and whatever the last street is, Portsmouth. And we, so we notified them in writing and sent them a letter about two weeks ago addressing the issue so that they knew this would be item, was being discussed. And that's where we received some written correspondence accordingly. Those would be the primary. We have received, interestingly, some people who walk and have heard about it. But those, you know, we, we haven't, we have notified everyone on the feeder that this is going to be discussed, but we haven't sent letters to everybody accordingly. So.
Parking their cars on the street at night because they've got company or something like that. And we've given them a ticket.
There's no resident that faces Fitch and Ranch Road. They're all on those respective streets. So all that I'm aware of, those people park all on those respective streets. And we've notified them in writing. But again, you know, there's, there's, this is a very heated issue and there's a lot of emotion about it. So I would, you know, there are a lot of different opinions about that. So I would encourage the council to listen to what the public has to say. And we can listen to letters and you can make your decision accordingly.
Other questions of staff?
No, no questions, but a comment that I was there, I don't know, a while ago to look at the gate, being notified by some residents that it was, you know, not working or it was open. And I went there and we shut the gate and a gentleman hopped the fence. So I appreciate the, you know, staff recommendation of let's, let's isolate, deal with the parking and see where that takes us and get some data and some comparables on that and how the residents feel once, once we've kind of laid down the boundaries of reinstating this parking thing. But not to be misled that I saw a nice bright young 20-something just hop the fence. So even if that discussion later on comes that we're going to take out the gate and make it a solid structure, you're still going to have people jumping the fence.
I think the only thing I heard on that was that there were people riding motorcycles through there and doing stuff which.
That was this recently, but a couple of months ago, there was another issue with the gate. I don't know if she wrote to all of you, but, wrote to me. But, so people do jump the gate, just FYI. So I don't think we'll ever prevent people from not just parking there during the day for that reason, because they can just jump over the fence. But, but I think listening to the residents is extremely important. And I appreciate staff and I appreciate Ashley doing all the background research.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. So I'd like to get to the comments.
Oh, this here from the public.
Okay. So Anne Osmus is the person who submitted, she's here. She submitted something in writing. So if it's okay with you, I'll let you speak and won't read your record. Okay.
Hello. I'm Anne Osmus and I live at Portsmouth Circle for two years. Even though we've owned that home for 45 years, we finally made the jump to move. So the last two years have been interesting with the pandemic, of course, but then the, the Wanda rezoning issue as soon as I got here. And then I'm real close to the gate. I'm real close to that Fitch and Ranch and I walk my dog every day. And I sent on my email some of my talking points. One of them was there's a construction company on the other side of the gate on Collins. And those guys were parking their trucks all there. And, you know, I see them come, come through the gate, get in their car and they take off in the morning. Okay, well, I'm just watching my back, you know, who are these guys, whatever. But the final straw was when my daughter was being dropped off at 8:30 in the morning by a friend. And as she was walking in, the friend took off, those same men got in, you know, their car, these kind of rough looking construction dudes yelling at my daughter, hey, 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 like that. And she felt very scared. She wanted to call the police, but she was afraid that, oh, they know where we live or whatever, right? So that was not good. And they came around and I was out there. I said, hey, you guys, you know, you're yelling at my daughter. That's not kosher. Where are you from? Oh, we just live across the gate. We like to, you know, and so that was something. And not only that, we've had, you know, young teens flying through, literally, boom, you know, flying through in and out that gate. I was standing to my longtime neighbor, he's almost 90 years old, Bill Campbell. He said, I'm going to tell them with the cane, I'm going to tell them this. And I said, don't do it. I think he's going to fall, right? He went up to me and said, you guys are flying in here. You can't be doing that, you know? And not only that, the trash that I pick up, I picked up pizza boxes near that gate, you know, and beer bottles, broken alcohol bottles. One day, there was marshmallows strewn all over the street for the heat to melt. I said, that's not nice. And I'm picking up marshmallows on the street. So I've become like a, kind of a mama bear watching that area. And, you know, there aren't any homes on Fitch and Ranch. So that's a perfect place for teens to party there, you know, and we have that situation. So I am in support of, of the no overnight parking. I think that's a great idea. And I'm, I'm support closing the gate because, I mean, hopping is one thing. I don't think I could hop it, you know, but, you know, I just want to keep Villa Park safe and beautiful. And I love it. And just, you know, with the uptick in the world and the crime and the things, we got to be aware. We got to be, you know, so I feel like I'm the neighborhood watch lady there trying to help out. But that's just my two cents. So I thank you.
Thanks so much.
We received no other correspondent or no other requests, but I would, if it's okay, I'll read some of these records. This is received on August 20th. As residents of Helena Circle, longtime Villa Park residents, we strongly object to closing the gate at the end of Fitch and Ranch Road permanently. We use it frequently for access to Collins Bus Line and the bike trail. Our name is Baumann. It's under WL and Marie Baumann, 17871 Helena Circle. And thank you for this item being discussed on the city hall meeting of August 23rd. That's one letter. We received August 23rd, this morning, we received to this Villa Park, Villa Park City Council, my apologies for not being able to make this meeting, do a canceled flight because of the weather. I'm going to mispronounce this. The Klebaugh family are the owners of the 17821 Collins Avenue Villa Park. Our home frequently uses the parking in the neighborhood behind our house, the same neighborhood we are part of. Our home is one of a few homes located on Collins, but our home is the only home without street parking unless we use the neighborhood behind. When guests come over, they have to park there. When family stays the night, they have to park there. My family and friends have constantly been harassed by one of the owners of the neighborhood. His name is Jack. Notes have been left on cars, tires deflated and even tires that have been slashed. The vandalism, I can't prove it is him, but I'm 100% sure that he's called the sheriffs and even code enforcement because I've spoken to him. I also believe he is individual pushing for this to be brought before the council day. By locking us out of the gate and taking away our parking creates a huge problem for our family. I'm totally fine if you want to turn this into permit parking after 10:00 PM, given, of course, permits for my family. Sincerely, James Klebaugh.
Sorry, Steve, was that a, is he a VP resident?
Yes, on Collins, he is the resident that is Villa Park but facing Collins.
Thanks.
Okay. Then we received this letter. It says, I'm responding to a letter from the city of Villa Park regarding the option to permanently lock the gate at Fitch and Ranch. Billy and Betty live at 17821 Portsmouth Circle that connects with Fitch and Ranch Road. For the following reasons, we do not agree with the permanent closure of the gate. One, there is a convenient bus stop at Collins and Wanda. Several mentally challenged individuals walk to this bus stop to get their places of employment. It would create a hardship for those people to walk from Helena Drive to Lincoln to board the bus. My husband, 90 years old, can no longer drive a car. He walks with a cane but cannot walk that far from Portsmouth to Lincoln to catch a bus for medical and other appointments. I will be 90 in January and declining eyesight may make driving hazardous for me. There are Villa Park residents who walk east and west on Collins Avenue, visit friends who live close to Collins Avenue. Our daughter lives at 950 Handy and I walk on Collins to her house and return the same way. It is too far to walk to Lincoln and back to Collins to walk to destination on Collins. There is no other way out if the gate is closed permanently except our Lincoln, our residents of Villa Park who walk their dogs, exercise walk to their trail leading to the canal along Walnut Avenue, use the gate to exit VP, cross Collins, access the trail leading to the canal area. We feel the gate permanently closed discriminates against the residents who live in this area. That's Mrs. Betty Campbell on Portsmouth. So those are the correspondence. And then we received a letter from Anne Osmus there who spoke to, I won't read hers.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that came to speak on this? Sir?
Hello, my name is Eric Reynolds. I've lived in Villa Park for about 20 years on the street that we're talking about. And that's been a constant problem. Once the city council put the gate in and it dramatically, you know, cut down the crime, did its job. Over the years, we've had this parking problem. It's now back. So I know that there, there's a lot of people that want to walk through the gate. Originally, that gate was supposed to be in the middle. It wasn't supposed to be at the end. The end was supposed to be a wall, couldn't jump over it. And, you know, it got, I think it changed over time. So, you know, as with the parking, it's, 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 I'm trying to look for the correct word. The parking needs to be handled in, in, you know, probably the timeframes that you guys are talking about, which there will be a little pushback because people have, you know, people coming over till 10 o'clock at night. So maybe the times can change or maybe this all can be a little bit revolving where, you know, if one thing doesn't work, we can try another. So I guess, I have a lot I want to say about this because we dealt with it over 20 years. The gate is going to be an issue. It should be moved to the middle. Then no one would have a problem. And then the gate at the end, or the wall, it should just be a wall at the end so no one can hop over. And if anyone's got any questions, I probably know most of the answers to all the people down there. We did a big survey ourselves, the residents did themselves. They took 100 affected houses and, you know.
Why don't you start there? Because there's a lot of people that don't know your involvement with the gate in the first place.
So there's, there's 100 people that are about.
Talk into the microphone.
There's about 100 people affected by Fitch and Ranch. 95 of them all went for the gate and decided to not do the parking. Try the gate first, not do the parking. So, which it worked. Honestly, it worked for about 10 years. It was fantastic. We had no, there was very, the crime dropped significantly. We had a lot less burglaries. What else? I'm trying to think. Oh, the trash. So there was a ton of stuff that, you know, didn't occur for about 10 years. Now, all of a sudden, I don't know where it came from, we have cars parking all day long, trash, you know, trash all over. It's just a parking problem now. So I don't know, to be honest with you, if the parking is going to stop, you know, if the no parking between the hours of 10 and 6 is what you guys are planning on, which obviously is going to be a little bit of problem for residents, maybe 12 to 6, I don't know. Maybe it's something we can look at later after 10 to 6 or after you guys decide to do whatever you're going to do on the timeframe. But eventually, it appears that having that gate at the end not working, which is quite frequently, about 90% of the time it's not working, having that down there at that end is still going to have probably the same problem it's had over the last 20 years. It'll probably pick up again, I would assume, just by being there for that time. So we're back to the original plan of the gate in the middle. So I guess that's the history of it. Either way you slice it, the gate at the end, if it's working, is fantastic. It keeps a lot of the problems away. And, you know, the parking is now, becomes such a problem where the parking solution that you guys have come up with will work. So that will work. I just think you're going to have a problem with the gate as opposed to a wall permanently shutting it or not shutting it. And by no means am I saying not have any access. There is a perfect spot right in the middle of the street where the access can be done. So that was originally what happened. They took the parking out of it.
So you're in support of the parking restriction?
Yes. I'm also want to, just like you said, I want, because you saw people jumping the fence, I also want to say that the end of the street is going to be a problem if the gate cannot be maintained.
And just to point out, on the map that we have up there, the, there's a white line that shows kind of the middle of Fitch and Ranch where I think the gate was originally going to, you can see it from Google Maps, too. If you look, there's, there's kind of a, as the trail up along Wanda, there's a dip into Fitch and Ranch, but then the gate wasn't built there. That's what you're talking about?
Yeah. So where, so you see where Beckley Circle is?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the middle. There's a bus stop. There's a, there's already a gate there. There's a trash can. I think there's a bus stop. I'm not sure. That's originally where it was supposed to be. Where the gate picture is at now, it's right there on the corner.
Got it. Yep. Thank you very much for your input. Well done. Okay. Anybody else that was here to speak from the public on this?
I have another question.
Okay. So going back to council member comments.
I'd like to ask the sheriff, have we seen increased crime over in that section of the, and what's going on with that to Eric's point about criminal activity?
May I say something?
Yeah, typically, you still have a couple of minutes if you want to come back up, please.
There's one day, there's a black Mazda still parked there. And one day, the, you know, the gas cap area was open and the gas cap was hanging out like it was siphoned. Another day, there was cops there and there was a gold Saturn that was always parked there. These two cars do not live in our area. They're coming from outside. And that gold Saturn had its tires slashed there. And there was police taking a record of that. So I saw two things there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Go up to the thing. Because there's people watching and they won't be able to hear you.
Because you asked about the crime, I don't know if it's been reported or not. There, there are actually people living, there's two, I know for a fact, two sets of people that were living in cars. And then the sheriff found out, took them, you know, got it out of there. Living in cars is, you know, we're stepping up our game on that street of the problem of the parking.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Crime prevention is our number one priority in Villa Park. I know in the two times I've run for office and knocked on doors, that's been, although we have the lowest crime rate around, it's still a top priority for our residents. And the objective, some years back, Eric, when you championed closing off the wall and putting up the gate, the concern was crime and it worked. Got your, got the crime rate down that area quite significantly. I'm sorry to hear that things have, we're starting to have problems down there again. I think the location of the gate is, is wrong. It's, it's kind of secluded. It kind of encourages people to jump over or, you know, or damage to the gate itself. It makes sense, yeah, to relocate that up to the middle of the Fitch and Ranch Road. It's a very visible, would be very visible. And it's not that inconvenient for people to go around the horn to get down to the intersection. But I'm concerned that if we just extend the wall down, you know, if people can still hop the wall, I think they would be less interested in hopping the wall if what was on the other side of the wall was private property. So what I'd like to propose that we consider is giving the, you know, closing off that gate permanently and giving that portion of that property to the adjacent property owner. So it now becomes private property and he'll keep people out of his backyard. And in doing so, protect his neighbors. So those are a couple of thoughts I have about the idea.
Don't we also have to work with the county about the bus stop and all that to move, to move the bus stops and so forth?
I mean, at this point, I think if, if we're looking at just the parking restrictions as a first step, if that's the kind of, the staff's recommendation is enforce parking restrictions right now, don't do anything else, but think about it as a future concern, I think we can probably work with that and.
That's fine. That does not require any address because the bus stop is on Wanda, not on Fitch and Ranch. So there's no issue there with respect to it. So, there's no issue there with respect to it. So, that's the case. I just would point out, the city owns, and Councilman Colacott's correct, the city owns that. And I don't know if you got down there, but we just upgraded that parcel as part of the Noel. So, we would, in disposing of property, we'd have to go through an entire process. It wouldn't be just bequeathing it, then we'd have to go through surplus land process, which has made the news lately about how cities are getting rid of land, but we have to go through and follow a very specific process. And that would be something that we could not, we could certainly initiate the process now, but it could not be done very quickly. We'd have to notify a number of other parties, including the owners.
Can I make a comment? So, I would like to have the council look at this tonight as just the parking issue. And then, I think we're peeling back some layers, dealing with the fence, relocating the fence, because the letters that went out, you know, it was just specifically talking about the fence where it's at and either closing it or keeping it open and the parking. And so, if we're going to start going down the path of, well, maybe we should move the fence, I think we need to re-initiate the communication out to the residents and let those residents that, maybe they didn't have a comment to say about whether the gate stayed open or closed, but they might have something to say now if we actually are going to start down that process of perhaps we move the gate. So, tonight I would like to say that we approve the staff recommendation of doing the restricted parking from 10:00 to 6:00. 10:00 to 6:00. See how that works out? Hear from the residents if the 10:00 to 6:00 works or is the 10:00 to 6:00 an inconvenience because of parties or gatherings or whatnot? Maybe it needs to be altered to a midnight thing. But get the data, process the data, use comparables, and then at a later date, after we have that information, maybe the gate becomes a moot point, maybe not. But that's what I would like to see is, let's put that gate on the back burner, get some more info, approve the parking restrictions.
So, I heard you say, I'd like to see that. I'm going to take that as a motion.
Yeah. If that's a motion, I'll second that.
I just didn't, I didn't want to stomp anybody else on making a comment, that's all.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
That's a motion.
I do agree that that land that is adjacent to those two homes, frankly, it is perfect to give to the private homeowners for them to maintain and add value to their own homes. But obviously, there is a very important process or processes that we have to go through. So, I support your motion as it stands. And then, on a different note, I think we really ought to look into that. I don't think we're, there's any value in the city owning that land.
Yeah. And just so you know, because we were talking about it, what Steve was referencing is the Surplus Lands Act. A couple of years ago, the state, HCD, said we have to go through this whole process and offer land to all these entities, public land, before we can sell it to anybody else. And that includes affordable housing groups and park districts and all this stuff. Now, this land might be so small, it might fit in with one of those exemptions, but we have to go through that process unlike our neighbor to the north and the stadium that sort of screwed that up. Right? So, that's what we were referencing in regard to that.
Excellent.
And probably, there's a good argument, it's not a gift to public funds issue because we would be turning over the maintenance responsibility, so we'd be downloading an obligation in exchange of getting rid of the property, potentially.
And my thought is that, you know, that making that private property would be like a plug to that end of Fitch and Ranch Road and kind of eliminate the idea of people coming into the neighborhood that aren't, don't really belong there.
One last thing, if I could ask the sheriff department to kind of, you know, come back and talk to us from time to time because you all were talking about the crime and things like that. Let's keep our eye on it and let us know how we're doing over there, that type of thing. So, we can, when we do make decisions in the future about fences and things like that, we've got that information to help us a little bit.
So, I would like to, one of the problems with the gate, and Eric is well aware, it's wrought iron. And wrought iron does not handle a weather well in the long run. So, it lasted for a long time. Now, you're going to, every time, you know, we fix one hinge, the other hinge rusts out. And so, it's a constant battle. So, you know, while it worked for the first 10 years, that's when the gate was functioning well.
Right. And let me rephrase that, it doesn't work, it's not being maintained. It has actually been maintained, it's just, like you said, it's old, it's falling apart, it breaks and no one knows. Right?
So, we would, one of the things we've looked at, I mean, if the, you know, that's, as far as if we, if that's a problem, is the gate maintenance, is, we've talked about alternative types of gate that could be used there, what would last, or weatherproof much better than wrought iron, as you know, just starts to weld and becomes actually a safety hazard at some point. That's why we chained it open because we were afraid it was going to fall off and hit somebody at one point.
Why don't we come back to that?
Yeah. So, we can come back.
We've got a motion and a second, right? Why don't we go ahead and vote on this? This is just for the parking restrictions as staff recommended.
That's a 5-0.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the neighbors for everybody chiming in. It's good to get their feedback.
Appreciate it. So, next new business is item 14. On this item, I actually have a question of council. So, being in the area, I'm expected to recuse myself. I'm wondering if I can speak on this matter as a resident?
You can. So, if you have a property interest impacted, you have to step down the dais, you would announce that you have a conflict potentially due to your real property interest. Now, you're a member of the public and you can speak on your behalf.
Okay.
But they don't have, they don't have to listen to you.
They don't have to, you guys don't have to listen to me at all.
Nice to take a break.
I guess I'm on.
Vince, want to take a break?
Yes. We have a request for a break and it's going on quite a few hours now, so a five-minute break. Go ahead. All right, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have a gavel. Hey, water bottle.
Excuse her.
Seats.
What kind of mayor are you?
I don't have a gavel. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and go back into session. We're on item 14. Excuse me. Item, yes, item 14 of new business. It's consideration of resolution 2022-3554, a resolution admitting the master parking and traffic resolution establishing limited parking zones on Nichols Avenue and Serrano Avenue and residential parking zones on Colony Grove Lane, Hanninger Way, Mark Circle, and Oakwood Circle and consideration of parking prohibited zones on Serrano Avenue. Steve?
Thank you. This item actually came, has come up over several years. This has to do with Nichols Avenue, parking along Nichols and Serrano, particularly during school hours, students, it's pretty much predominantly students that park along there as opposed to the people dropping them off. This is on a problem where you have parking on both sides of the streets, on both Serrano and Nichols. The issue came up because the residents on several of the streets, Hanniger, et cetera, concerned about the students actually parking almost in the intersections of the streets. So, it almost became difficult from a site perspective to get in and out of the streets. So, our first, you know, we, traffic engineer went out and said, hey, if you're not doing anything else, the first thing we need to do is establish, expand the red zones so they can't park that close. Well, that was sort of the initial discussion. Then we met with the residents. So, one of the residents said, hey, look, we need some parking restrictions on here, I think that solves the problem. So, what we are, after meeting with our traffic engineer, talking to the school district actually, and they were very supportive of our efforts to try and move the students off the streets and into the school parking lot. You'll recall, when they did this whole parking study, they did, the school evaluated the construction of the new building and in so, they did a parking place count. They knew they had enough and we know they still have enough parking places over there to accommodate the students. So, the school district was saying, hey, we'd like our stu, we'd like the students on the campus as well. We don't want them parking across or, you know, it presents a problem crossing the streets, it presents all sorts of other potential, other activities going on that they might not want. So, we sort of talked this through and decided we need to move away and we are now very much in a different mode of thinking. So, where we're at at this point is we believe that if you, if you, if we eliminate parking on Nichols Avenue from Taft to Serrano and Serrano Avenue eastbound, parking on both sides. Now, this is during school hours and if you remove that parking, and you'll see it's in the yellow areas, the yellow would be the restricted during school hours. Now, what we've talked about though is those seats, those streets under the hubs, Mark Circle and those three that come off of Serrano, those right now are residential parking restrictions and we would recommend that you keep residential restrictions there, but not eliminate parking. So, in other words, a resident would be able to park on those streets during school hours, but not, we wouldn't have the student parking or the visitor parking. So, what we did is we sort of, in advance of the council meeting with the start of the school, we went to, we went ahead and just marked off those streets and, you know, we put cones and signs on there for the start of school. So, that's been, school's been in session about a week, just under a week now. And what that we did is we coned off Nichols and Serrano, you can see there. And we said no parking, you know, during school hours. And there is no parking there. What we found is that the kids weren't parking there, the school district was out there meeting with kids who were trying to park there, saying, hey, come on over to the school, we can talk about parking permits and the requirements for parking, whatever it would take. And the school district, again, has been very supportive of that. In parking along those streets, we're not prohibiting, and what's happened was it used to be people parked on those streets and then they were double parking when they were using it as a loading zone. So, it was virtually impossible to get up and down Nichols and sometimes Serrano. When you remove that restriction, people can still, and we still recommend that you let them load on Nichols and Serrano because that presents a no real problem. I mean, actually, it's like clear. And having been out there probably of the five or six days in school, I've been out there four of the days, actually watching the traffic on different times, it is much smoother, it has, as Donna Buxton has indicated, it has changed the parking flow or the traffic flow around the junior high and the high school on Taft and Nichols. So, what, after considerable discussion and the residents, we are strongly recommending absolutely not painting any red curbs on there, so that's real clear. But we are recommending doing no parking during school hours on Serrano and Nichols where it's highlighted in yellow. And then residential parking only during school hours on those three streets and I'm, what are the three streets?
Oakwood, Colony Grove, Hanninger and Mark.
And Mark. Those would be restricted parking for school hours there. Now, what we have had a question about, will the residents have people stopping by or potentially extra? We would strongly recommend that you don't remove and do any extraordinary parking for Serrano or Nichols, but we can issue temporary permits for those that are parking along those residential streets so we identify. One of the things we can do, we can identify, we can get parking permit to cows or whatever we need to do for those residents. And we believe that that will eliminate the students parking over there. This, again, just along like Fitch and Ranch, would require sheriff enforcement. Sheriff will not enforce until the city takes action. So, the temporary approach that we used only works temporarily, they won't cite for it because it's just a temporary. They, if we, if the council would approve this, we would incorporate that into ordinance, both signs, a limited number of signs that indicate no parking and the sheriff would enforce it. I believe that this as a measure at this point would solve a lot of the problems that we have over there. I believe the residents, all of the, most all of the residents that we've heard from, and I've got a couple I can read from, but I believe there are people in the audience have supported this approach. Again, it is not restricting loading, it's restricting parking. What I mean is if someone parks a car, gets out and leaves, that's not allowed. If someone pulls up, talks to their kid, yells at their kid, reminds them about whatever they forgot or has a two-minute discussion, that's acceptable because they move on. And I received a number of, residents have called me and said, hey, we don't mind them unloading along there. What we don't want them to do is leave the car and it'd be a problem. So, I think we have a potential that will solve. The other issue is, is this going to push people around to move elsewhere and students to park elsewhere? Most, all of the other areas, interestingly enough, already have residential restrictions on parking during school hours. So, what you're really doing, if you see all those red areas, a lot of them have restrictions about permanent, I mean, students parking during certain hours. So, what we're trying to do is bring this into alignment. I think if we do that, we solve some problems. Now, an interesting thing has come up along Santiago, if you, the south side where the ball field is, because the school has changed hours, there are some issues, we're going to have to change the signs because the school hours, I think it wanted to say from 7:00 to 9:00, but school doesn't start till 8:30 now, so it kind of, we need to tweak those hours a bit. We have to, we have to change that around a little bit because that, but I think this is the first step we need to do and we're going to survey all the signs around there and make sure they're all in sync accordingly with the new school hours. So, I think that's what we're doing. We have a number of people who've come to speak and I've received a lot of verbal input and I have some written correspondence I'll read in the record when you feel appropriate.
Thank you for the staff report. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Seeing none, hearing none. Let's go and move on to comments that we received electronically or do we want to have? Your pleasure, Steve.
I would recommend that people who've been waiting.
Folks in the audience, let's go with our first blue sheet.
Sandy Bass.
So, before Sandy speaks, Mayor Portem, if I may.
By all means.
Just for the record, the mayor stepped down because of the location of his real property. There is an exception in the political reform act called limited residential impacts, which allows people to participate, including yourself potentially, if it, on parking restrictions in neighborhoods, if it's more than 50 homes or 5% of the population. It's too late at night, I'm not good at it to do the math on that. So, it's safer that you recuse yourself, but just so you know, you're sort of double-covered. Okay. Go ahead. Sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening, good evening. I just wanted to say. About one month ago, thank you for turning that on, the neighborhood focus group met with the Villa Park High School, Dr. Ken Miller, Scott Harvey, Dennis McQuestian, the new principal coming in, and Steve Franks over here to discuss the Villa Park High School students parking on both sides of the streets of Nichols, turning the corner, coming down Serrano, then Oak Grove is the first street, Hanninger, and then Colony Grove and almost to center. And they parked in the bike lanes on both sides of the street. In the last two years, more and more students were parking along these streets, causing severe safety issues along Serrano, Saravilla, and the residents who were trying to exit their streets to either turn left or right, and it was very dangerous. Along with the safety issues is a health issue as the students were littering the streets with all kinds of lunch products and assorted things. And our wonderful Mike Knowles even complained about him having to pick up excessive trash along the way. The neighbors ended up picking up trash along the way too. And there was no street sweeping because the cars were always parked there. And I want to comment and recommend, and say thank you very much to Steve Franks and all the Villa Park High School staff for being so responsive to these issues. They were eager to meet with us and resolve this before school started, which was so important. The city posted temporary signage for restricted parking from 8:30 to 3, from 8:00 to 3:30 Monday through Fridays on Nichols and Serrano, and we have our lovely neighborhood back again. So, we are requesting that this signage be permanent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, member of the public?
We have no gate to discuss. There is no gate. Hi, my name is Kimberly Young and I live at 9802 Hanninger Way. I've lived there for 27 years and prior to that, I lived on Mark Circle as a guest of my sister. What a lovely lady. First, I would like to personally thank Mr. C. Franks for bringing this message forward so expeditiously. We have lived with this for quite some times, for some time. For a long time, people thought that it was all about construction, but I can tell you that it's been there for many, many years. We brought it to Steve after meeting with OUSD and it's on the agenda. So, hallelujah and thank you very, very much. The parking on the streets of both Nichols and Serrano has been increasing problem over the years. It's not a simple result of improvements in construction at the high school. The issue has been increasing unchecked for years prior to construction and not until recently has it been given the proper attention. It used to increase dramatically after the new year of school. It also increased after the new year, the actual new year, not just school year, but, you know, from 1999 to 2000, from 2017 to 2018, primarily because the younger students were getting their license, didn't buy a parking permit and so therefore, they would just park on the street. I walked around. I walked around, asked many of the students why they parked there. Some of them said that it was too expensive. Others said that it was much easier to leave school, and probably one of the biggest reasons was that they could go and hang out at their car for lunch and for breaks, which they can't do, parking on the campus. Definitely not interested in having a whole bunch of teenagers at lunch right next to my house. That being said, safety was the biggest issue that we saw. Not only are they parking on both sides of the street, but they are double parking when parents are trying to drop their children off. This has never been an issue of drop-off and/or pickup, even though the parents that come 40 minutes early to pick up a student, I guess they take a nap. I don't blame them. But that being said, it really is about them parking and leaving their car the entire day. Sanitation is huge, the debris from lunch or whatever they might have had, they don't want to keep it in their car, they just toss it out the window, vape pens, I've found all kinds of fun things, and I just clean it up myself. And then on top of that, the loitering and the noise. My husband now works from home, thank you COVID, and so when they are out there at lunch and blaring their music, it makes it pretty hard for him to work with the window open, and that's just not okay in a neighborhood. So when we met with an administration from OUSD, they said that some of the reasons that the kids didn't want to park on campus is because they didn't have a license, because they didn't have insurance, or maybe because they didn't want their car to be searched, for whatever reason. I certainly don't want those reasons in my neighborhood. I'm trying to just have a nice, quiet town, and not having a license and no insurance, that they shouldn't be driving, period. We've been notified, there's plenty of parking spaces. We've been notified that any student that might have an issue with the expense can talk with the administration at the school, and that can be addressed, and they can be taken care of. So we really would like the restricted parking. We definitely don't want the red curbs, and I appreciate that being part of the conversation. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Bethany Nixon?
I'm a little rusty on my public speaking, like I've done this since college. So my name is Bethany Nixon, I live on Oakwood. So my backyard backs up to Nichols, I think is how it's pronounced. So I've been there for about a year, so this is all very new to me. I will tell you, I'm actually really shocked to hear that there's actual parking at the high school. I assumed it was because they only had so many permits, hence why we had half the kids parking in our community. So I'm a little upset to hear that. I'm a little upset that the high school hadn't addressed that. But let me go through a couple of quick notes. I'm really excited to be here. I was actually going to start talking to neighbors. I had no idea all of us were talking about it. I was actually going to start talking to people. You seem to have already addressed the problem that we've been having. I wholeheartedly support the proposal for expanding the limited parking for residents only. Oakwood already has that, so I hope that you guys keep that. I want to be able to park my car, not get a ticket, in front of my house. As for Serrano and Nichols, obviously, we have a big problem with like the middle school pickup. You know, we want to be able to have the parents be able to do that. I do want to bring up one issue, though, and I don't think people realize this, is on Oakwood, we're the first street during pickup, and obviously, the high schoolers, you got the high schoolers there that are there all the time, then you've got parents coming to the middle school, picking up, it's kind of crazy. I'm actually out of my home, so I'm there all the time. If I exit a home, sometimes once, I'll do it like 10 times a day. So I'm constantly turning left and right onto Serrano. I've almost got hit multiple times. I've actually thought about doing the red curbs, so I could actually see, because we have cars parked on one side of Serrano, cars parked on the other, the kids, they're teenagers, you know, you got that curve coming, and they kind of like push it up, you know, edge to edge. So I know some people didn't like the red curbs. I don't see how it really hurts putting them in anyway, because after 3:30, we might still have parents coming in, they might be parking their car. I don't really understand why there's a problem putting them in, it's just paint. Maybe other people have problems with it, and they can address it. But I am excited to have the restrictions in there. The one thing I did want to bring up was the unintended consequences the community has been badged with by having the high school students parking where they're parking. I'm in my backyard a lot, so I get to hear all of the conversations, everything that's happening when the kids are hanging out. We've had some fights, that I actually was like, do I call the cops, you know? Smoking pot. I know on at least one occasion outside my house, because I have a little bit of a shaded area, smoking pot at lunch. I don't really want to go and approach these kids and tell them not to, because I don't want to have my age, my house aged. I've had a neighbor who actually did address one of the kids, apologized and left the area. But at the end of the day, this is our community, we are not part of the high school. We do not want the kids parking there. Have them at the high school. The kids should be supervised. You know, you have security guards there, you have teachers to be able to handle the problems that they have. You know, these guys are teenagers, they don't always make the best decisions. You know, we're having trash, we're having fights, we're having illegal drugs. Let's get them back on campus where they should be, and eliminating those problems. So anyway, thank you. I'm going to sit down now.
Thank you. Thank you.
One of the things I really did want to address is, the school district has been the school, and the new principal, Scott Harvey as well, have been very supportive in addressing, making sure that everybody, regardless of ability to pay, would have the access to a parking place. The other thing they have done is they have changed the rules about who can leave campus at lunch, and that has significantly changed the activity in the town center and adjacent areas. So like I say, the school district is trying to work with us and trying to help deal with the situation. They recognize the potential problems that are off-campus, so they want to move them back on to the campus where they can have actually more control and ability to monitor. So they're not here this evening, but I know that Scott Harvey has been out there with me twice, you know, on the streets, checking to make sure in the mornings, afternoons, and he has been very supportive, Scott Harvey from the school district, and the new principal as well has been out there. So I want to really give credit to the school district to try and work with things, too. They're not just abandoning the issue, they're very much trying to help engage and solve it. So again, whenever you want to, I can read the letters that we received.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. This is from Ann Marie Wilson, says hello, I received a letter regarding a proposed to limit student parking in Serrano and adjacent streets. I live at 9782 Nichols, directly across from the CV auditorium. I agree that there's an issue during a school year, high school students have parked in front of my house. This increases congestion, makes visibility difficult, issues you don't want in a school area. My only concern with your proposal is you not include all of Nichols. I do not want the high school students to simply park further down Nichols. To be clear, I'm not proposing to discourage the middle school student drop-off pickup, I just do not want this proposed solution to create another safety problem. Thank you, Ann Marie Wilson. Then we receive one, this is from, oh, I'm sorry, Julie Smith, city manager, I'm wondering why this sudden no parking surrounding CV Middle School doesn't include all schools? I live very close to the back gate of Villa Park High School and always have people parking to pick up, drop off kids. I don't find it to be an issue, except for trash occasionally. Why can't these areas be marked for 15-minute loading/unloading zone versus no parking? We can safely take and pick up our kids. If it's good enough for the area around CV Middle School, it should be equal for all neighborhoods surrounding schools. Thank you for your reconsideration, this matter. After, I did contact her, and then she said, just after we talked about the issues of those other streets already having restrictions, she says, just a note to thank you for your reply, this helps ease my mind that one neighborhood isn't getting preferential treatment over the other. Thank you again, Julie Smith.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Jen?
Hello, I'm Jennifer Gordon, and I live on Haninger Way. And in regards to the restricted red parking, Haninger Way is a very short street, so if we have the red restricted outside of Haninger Way, our guests will have to walk much farther to get to a parking spot, our guests. So that's why I also don't want the red. And since the parking problem's been fixed, we no longer have that safety issue when we're pulling out. So in regards to that, that's why I don't want the, I feel like it's been fixed, so I would, I'm against the red restricted parking outside of Haninger Way, since we don't have very many parking spots on our cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Sir?
My name is Chad Zimmerman, I live on Haninger Way. So I've been reluctant to weigh in on some of this, I've tried to make sure that I wasn't prejudiced or biased in the, but since I'm not voting, I figure I can talk on this. I will highlight the safety concern. My son has actually literally been hit by a car coming out of Oakwood Circle, trying to ride his bike along there, because the cars along that street make it impossible to see. And he luckily wasn't damaged in any sort of permanent way, but it's a real safety concern. And I know that's important for our city council to address those. I agree that this problem only exists, it has been something that has developed over time, and that we thought possibly the construction at the school was the primary source of this, but we see now that the construction is done, has been done there, they've reorganized the front flow, and the parking has gotten worse. So we realize, recognize that this is a problem that does need some sort of city intervention to remediate. So I'm in favor of the recommendations that the staff have put forward, and that's my weighing in. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Last call. Anyone else that would like to, ma'am, please bow to me and step forward to the mic and state your name?
My name is Carrie Peon, and I do live on Mark Circle, and I did write a letter, which you didn't read. I don't know if you have it or not.
I didn't receive it, maybe I just, maybe it got into me.
Okay, I did write a letter. I have pictures of how the streets look during school time. It is very dangerous. That safety was my number-one concern. I'm also concerned about why the students, I really wanted to know, why aren't they parking on their campus? They have a parking lot, and I went over there and took pictures of, there's a whole row of empty spaces back there. And they're down on Nichols and Serrano, where they really don't belong there. And then one day, I was leaving my house, and Mike, one of the maintenance guys, was on Nichols, and there's big red graffiti on a stone wall. And I stopped the car, and I said, what's this? And he said, I don't know, I just found it. And he thought I was mad at him, and he said, I'm going to get paint to paint it. And I said, well, I'm not upset with you, I just, what is this? You know, the kids can hide behind the cars, they can do all sorts of things. He says they pick up trash every day. I expressly had written a letter that said, no one should have to be picking up after high school kids. They shouldn't be dropping their trash and leaving it anywhere. So basically, that was my letter with pictures, and I wanted it to be heard. So I thank you, thank you very much, and I think I'm pretty happy with your choice of decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Council members, we've heard from the public, do you have any other, ma'am? Go ahead.
So I love this, because this is a great example of how community, you know, interacts, comes together, city staff, council, and we're addressing a problem. And I was really happy to hear that OUSD and C.OUSD get so involved in this, because this really is an OUSD issue. Our city streets and our residents shouldn't be impacted by what the school provides or doesn't provide. And in answer to yours, maybe some people don't realize this, but when you are a student there, in order to get a parking permit, you have to show valid registration and insurance. So to answer you why, you don't understand why some kids won't park there, well, you know, Steve's right. There are many kids that don't have the insurance and don't have the registration, so they cannot get the parking pass. And then as far as the barrier financially, Principal McHouston also, you know, told our city manager, but also I had a conversation with them, and if there is a hardship, they can still get that. So I was really happy to see that OUSD put so much, and Principal McHouston, his admins, they have redesigned that whole process, so that you don't have at lunch, 200 students walking across and going down Nichols to get in their cars, which then delays all the people trying to turn. And this is something where I think addressing the one problem of that Nichols and Serrano area opened up a whole bunch of positive consequences, even though that sounds like a negative, but it's positive. So I think that the residents not having that parking, and maybe just keeping it as a loading zone, or, you know, the five-minute, you know, drop-off pickup, eliminates the need for the red curbs, because you won't have all those cars parking there, so you won't have the potential of Will getting hit by a car, because he'll be able to see. So I agree with staff recommendation, and again, there are many communities all over California next to schools where cities do limit the parking, and it's up to the schools to address that and figure out where their students are going to park. It's not up to us. So that's my comment.
Go ahead.
We dealt with the school traffic issue in my neighborhood, off of the streets off of Serrano several years ago. And as part of that, we looked at other schools throughout the Orange Unified School District. Virtually all of them are posted parking by permit only, or parking, some kind of restricted parking. So this is not unusual, unique to Villa Park, it's not unique to Saravilla Middle School. It's an issue throughout Orange Unified School District, and it's dealt with by the City of Orange in the same fashion that we're proposing tonight.
Anything further?
I have one quick question. You didn't get any comments that people wanted.
I had a, I had two residents call, verbally unpleasant about the proposal, but they were, neither were Villa Park residents.
Okay. All right. If there's no further public comment, and no more, if there's no more public comment or further comment from our council, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second?
Vote.
Ms., do you want to read the, just?
You're voting number one. You have fulfilled number two by just discussing it, so there's no action required. We're not putting any red curbs. Passes by a 4-0 vote.
Thank you, guys, for staying so long. I know it was a long meeting, but we appreciate it.
Good job, good job.
Right. The helm is yours.
Thanks, everybody. I'm going to, just one more second. We are on to our city manager's report. Steve, if you want to, go ahead, please.
Thank you. An interest time, I won't go into too much detail, just let you know that I do have to, pursuant to city council policy, report that James Road, we did make an administrative adjustment for James Road, let's see, 9571 James Circle, and I made an administrative setback from 11 foot 3 inches to 10 foot 1, which is deviation of 1.2, which is less than 25% for a single-story family addition. So that was approved administratively. Otherwise, I can available to answer any questions, and we'll leave it at that.
Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Public comment, anybody? Okay. We shall move on to mayor and council member matters. First item is item 16. This is an item that we continued from last month. I had one question on this, which was, in terms of appointing district representatives, this has been something that's typically been a mayor's prerogative here in the city? Is this something that we actually need to vote on, or can I just assign somebody?
While it's a mayor's prerogative, the vote, the council takes a full vote on it in the first January meeting. So it would have to, it changes the vote of the city council, so to do that, you would need another vote of the city council.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. Great. So I'm going to go ahead and just propose what I initially proposed, and... So, I'm going to go ahead and just propose what I initially proposed, and we can comment or vote on it, but my proposal is to replace the alternative member on the Orange County Sanitation to place Robbie Pitts in place of Robert Colacott for that, for the remainder of the year. That's my proposal.
And, can I say something?
Sure.
In doing this, it's because you wanted to have this, like, succession plan, right?
Right.
So, I, and, and, and we discussed this a little bit last time. Your succession plan is, is a finite thing, right? You're done in December.
Correct.
You're done. So, Councilman Colacott still has a couple months left, and then he'll be done forever and ever.
Correct.
And ever. So, I guess, I'm not understanding why you wouldn't just go ahead and accelerate your succession plan by stepping down, since you're going to be stepping down anyways. Leave Councilman Colacott where he is, because you're actually penalizing him for you wanting to do the right thing of having somebody brought up to speed, and just make Bob the director, and then Councilman, sorry, Councilman, Councilman Colacott the director and Councilman Pitts the alternate. That way, Councilman Pitts can still do what this intends, but since you want to leave anyways, why not just let Councilman Colacott resume back for the next two months, and then he's on his little merry way?
Sure. So, that's not my proposal. That actually doesn't satisfy any of the objectives I have for succession. The idea being that putting Robbie in a position as alternate puts him in a position to gain that knowledge. I have been the, the director for the last year and a half and have the most intimate knowledge of the current directors that are there. When I look back on my time of taking over from Bob, and I look at what I gained, the only knowledge that was transferred to me from Bob directly was the introduction of directors to me. There was no other information that was passed on. All the other information was mine to gather independently. Therefore, the only thing that makes sense to me in terms of succession is moving Robbie into that position as alternate director, allowing me the opportunity to introduce him to other directors, as I was, and then he would be able, in a position, to know more about that position next year.
I proposed an alternate, and I concur with Crystal on this. I think that would be great. You've got somebody who's a proven water expert, somebody who has done this as a profession for a long period of time, who has experience, who can help convey the, what, what the water district does at the nitty-gritty level, and bringing Robbie up to speed over a period of time. I, I am 100% behind that.
Again, I'll just repeat. There is absolutely nothing in the two years that I spent with Bob where he passed any information on to me, except for just introducing people. And the count, the board of directors of the Orange County Sanitation has changed over the last year and a half. It is not the same people. I would be the one ideally in the right position to introduce Bob or Robbie to new directors. So, there's really no point in moving Bob into that position. It gains this board or our city council, nothing, absolutely nothing. The only thing that actually gains us something is if Robbie replaces Bob as alternate director.
There's a motion, correct? Is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion, no second.
So, my motion is the only one that's out there, right, which is to move Bob?
And you can't make an alternate motion until there's a second. Either the motion gets a second, or the motion dies.
Substitute motion?
Now, it's substitute motion.
Bob as primary, Robbie as alternate, for the reasons stated.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have an alternate motion and a second? We can vote on that?
That's the one we vote on first?
Substitute goes first.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh.
Debate's open still.
Sure. Your, my?
My, my, I'll go back to what I said last time. If, if, if the, if, on the alternate proposal, just keep things the way they are. I'll, I'll serve at the pleasure of the next mayor.
That sounds like a third.
Alternate.
Alternate.
That's a second substitute motion.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, keep it just the way it is, with Bob as the alternate and Chad as the director. Keep it the way it is.
If you want to make that a motion, it can be a second substitute, or it's just a comment. Okay, so now, that's a substitute, substitute motion. Does that have a second?
I would second that, and the reason why, yeah, you can introduce around the, whoever might be standing in the wings, so to speak, to the new directors. There's going to be a whole slew of new directors come January from all the cities. No other city does this. No other, you know, has this quote-unquote succession plan. And in fact, it's unnecessary to have a succession plan with the sanitation district, because in January, they have quite an extensive workshop where they provide new, new director orientation. It's worked well for years, and we've never had a need for this. So, I think that Robbie's, also with, with this, what the first proposal and the second and the amendment, first amendment proposes, is basically usurps the rights and responsibilities of the council that will be sworn in in December. We should not, we should let them decide entirely who the representatives are, not presuppose somebody that should, that should be the, the director and alternate, alternate director. That's really their business. We're stepping into their business. We should stand back, you know, let things take their course. Whoever is appointed to be the sanitation district representative will have an opportunity to meet the new, the other new board members and go through the orientation and, you know, effectively represent the City of Villa Park and the sanitation district board.
I think given, in light of the, the two gentlemen's conversation and what their obvious wishes are, I'm going to go ahead and remove my substitute motion. Then theirs becomes a primary substitute motion. Isn't that correct?
So, theirs is already the primary one, so we're going to vote on theirs, unless there's another one, even though I think under the.
There will not be. There's not enough of us, thankfully.
Let me finish.
It's too late at night.
Let me finish. You're actually limited to two substitute motions, so I was, I was going to get to that anyway. But, so, vote on theirs, and then if that fails, then it comes to you. You can remove your motion, and we go back to Chad. I think the motion is.
I do want to say one more thing, though, because like, I guess, there's this idea that there's somehow something punitive about this. There's absolutely nothing that Bob loses by not being the alternate director. There's no, like, he hasn't been, over the last year and a half, there's been no time where he's been called upon. He hasn't received any attendance at these meetings. There's been nothing that, this is punitive in any way, shape, or form. This is really only designed to be able to have somebody that is there to be able to know what's going on. There are a number of constant tutorials and trainings that happen at the, the, the Orange County Sanitation Board meetings, where somebody new attending those would pick up information leading up into that time period. Succession plan is, you're right, it hasn't been done very much before, but it's a really good idea. It's something that's a proposal that we should be thinking about for our future, so.
Again, I have to disagree. This, we are usurping the, the responsibilities and the authorities of our, the next council. Let them take care of this business. It's their responsibility.
I just, again, all, you're right. I will disagree. There's nothing that usurps that at all, because obviously, the new mayor gets to decide that anyway, so this is just for the remainder of this period. That's all this is. Anyway.
We repeat the.
Can I call the question?
Please.
Yeah, can we repeat the?
Motion is to keep stuff the same.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Right.
And that had a second, right?
And that had a second.
Had a second, from the two individuals involved.
Can you reset the?
Vote.
I hadn't, oh.
That passes by the 4-1 vote, so the remains the same.
It's good. Vote, just technically, it wasn't reset, so that was my, I had, anyway. It doesn't matter. Let's move on. It's totally fine. We're now on to mayor and council member matters. Now, it's time to hear individual council member information items, starting with council member Colacott.
Nothing to report.
Mayor Portem, would you like to go next?
In the interest of time, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Miles?
Just want to say thanks to city staff for working with the residents.
Excellent. Councilmember Pitts?
Yes, I have one recognition. I'd like for my wife to come to the podium, please. Podium, please.
Surprise.
I don't know how many of you all were in attendance at National Night Out, but once again, my wife and her troupe of chefs were prepared a meal for all the first responders and so forth that attended that night, and I want to thank you for all the hard work that you put into it. You didn't use my recipe for pulled pork, but you did your own, which was amazing, I hear. So, I'd like to thank you, Marie Stubber, Betsy Little, Kathy Curtis, Deanna Fasenelli, Bob Brockmeyer, and Carolyn Riker for all their hard work. The food was amazing, and Barbara Brockmeyer. Huh? Right? Okay. Not Bob, Barbara. Bob doesn't cook. But thank you very much for, for everything that you did and continue to do. You've done it for many years, but I really do appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nice to say.
You're here. So, all I was going to say was that National Night Out was good this year. It was, I know Councilmember Miles was there as well, and that I can't say enough, thank you so much, Elizabeth, and all, all the women who provided meals. National Night Out is something that I hope gets bigger in the city and continues to be a source for our community to get together. Those community events are always really important and, I think, cherished, so. I had one more thing. Let's think.
Close, a closed session.
And that's right. Thank you.
That's your hint.
I'm like, that, I'm like, there's something coming up, and it's a closed session.
So, that's government code section 54956.9D2, anticipated litigation, significant exposure, one case.
So, officially, I'm not adjourning this meeting. We're just.
We're going back, then. We'll come back and report.
Got it.
If we did anything.
Thank you.